Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Adult Social Care Health Select Committee. I am councillor Marwan El Naghi, the Select Committee Chair. Aligned with government guidance that everyone should stay at home as much as possible and in accordance with government regulations on holding virtual meetings, this meeting is being held via Microsoft Teams live conferencing. All the committee members, council officers and the parties who wish to participate in this hearing are joining from remote locations. Please bear with us if we run into any technical challenges during this meeting. This meeting is also streamed live and members of the public and the media are welcome to follow the meeting remotely and listen to the discussion that's taking place. I would welcome all those who are first time viewers, listeners to our special meeting of the Adult Social Care and Health Select Committee. We will start this meeting with a 72 second silence to remember those who lost their lives in the Granville Tower fire tragedy. So please Gareth, can you time 72 seconds for us please?
Yes, starting with 72 seconds now.
Thank you.
The 72 seconds has elapsed.
Thank you very much Gareth. At the outset, I would like to ask anyone who is speaking to unmute your microphone when you speak and also to save bandwidth, I would like to ask councillors only to switch on their camera when speaking and please remember to switch them off when you are not addressing the meeting. If a councillor wishes to speak on a particular item and has not been called to speak, please indicate by typing the letter Q in the conversation column and or using the feature, the hands, by or drawing my attention by speaking up. Please do not use the conversation column for any other comments as these are being seen by all participants and they are retained. To assist your fellow councillors, officers and members of the public watching online to identify you, please state your name before you speak. If there are any connection or any technical problem I might face or something happened, please let us know. In the event that my connection drops, I nominate my Vice Chair, Councillor Max Schouhan to take over the meeting and I will rejoin you as soon as possible. I confirm that I have no declaration of interest to make regarding the items on this agenda. I will now turn to my committee members. So please, good members, also let us know if they have any declaration to make after introducing yourself. May I call now my Vice Chair, Councillor Schouhan?
Thank you President, I am an honorary consultant at Charing Cross Hospital and I am a medical director for the CQC for well dead reviews.
Thank you Councillor Schouhan. Councillor Idris?
Good evening everyone, my name is Wala Idris. I am a member of the committee and councillor for Brompton and Hertfordshire Ward. Thank you.
Councillor Idris, thank you very much. Councillor Laura Round?
She's presented apologies, Marwan.
Thank you Gareth. Councillor Malcolm Spalding?
Thank you Chairman, it's Councillor Malcolm Spalding. I'm the Ward Councillor for Earlscott Ward. I have no declarations of interest.
Thank you. Councillor Portia Thaxton?
Councillor Portia Thaxton, St Helens Ward, no declaration of interest.
Thank you. And Councillor Charles Williams?
Councillor Charles Williams, Redcliffe Ward, I have no interest to declare.
And may I ask our co-opted members Christine Vigers of Healthwatch, Central West London?
Hello Christine Vigers from Healthwatch, Central West London. I'm also the Healthwatch representative on the Joint Committee of CCGs.
Thank you Christine. We received no apologies for absence, I can see. We all declared the declaration of interest being sorted. Now, this one item discussion in the special meeting containing a briefing on the proposed merger of the Royal Brompton and Herefield NHS Foundation Trust and Guy's and St Thomas's NHS Foundation Trust prepared by the trusts. Representatives of the Royal Brompton are here this evening to explain their proposed merger and to answer questions. In addition to the Royal Brompton, we have also invited representatives from a number of health partners in North West London to provide their views on the merger to us and to answer questions. And these are Chelsea Westminster Hospital NHS Foundation Trust, Imperial College Faculty Medicine, Imperial College Health Day and NHS Trust, West London CCG, Royal Marsden NHS Foundation Trust, NHS England and Healthwatch. May I welcome you all and thank you so much for being here this evening at such very important meeting. I have asked our health partners to speak briefly to the committee first about their perspective, position and views on the proposed merger. So that way we can have as much clarity on the issue at stake as possible. Then I will invite questions from committee members and other councillors from residents present here this evening. As Health Scrutiny Chair, I am coming to this discussion with an open mind and I'm here to listen. I expect to hear all arguments and I expect there will be some questions to improving of our health partners. I envisage that having listened to all, the Select Committee will wish to make recommendations to the Royal Brompton, to our full council and to the council leadership team. Hence, I will allow some time at the end of this meeting for our committee members to discuss those recommendations based on our meeting tonight. May I call now upon our representative from the Royal Brompton Hospital, please to give their view on this matter?
Chair, I'm sorry to butt in, but I've had my hand up. I just want to make a point of order.
Yes, sorry, I do apologize.
It's all right Chair, I'm just raising a point of order that this is not a merger but an acquisition. And I think we should treat it as that as the meeting goes on, which is detailed in the Bromptons case itself, okay?
Thank you, Councillor Henderson, yes, okay, points taken. Now, to begin this meeting, I would like to invite Dr Richard Crocker-Mason and Robert Craig from the Royal Brompton team to present their case for the merger. I understand that Helena Bridgeman as patient governor and Professor Abbs will add to that, to this presentation. I encourage you all to be concise as possible, please. So over to you, team of Royal Brompton Hospital, who is going to start first?
Thank you Councillor El Naghi, it's, my name is Dr Richard Crocker-Mason. I've been a consultant cardiologist at the trust for more than 20 years until recently the medical director. Can I just check that if I'm moving the slides forward that people can see the slides? The transforming care and research?
Hi, Yazmin Goven, I can move the slides for you and just let me know.
Thank you Yasmin.
It's easier. So as I say, thank you councillor El Naghi for the invitation to present. It's actually been a couple of years since our last presentation and we are glad to be given the opportunity to share what we believe are exciting plans that will benefit our patients. First, I'd like to say and like to reassure our patients, local residents and members of the committee that Royal Brompton Hospital is not closing. We will continue to provide specialist care for patients who need our services on the current site for at least the next decade. Staff are very grateful for the recognition that the council have expressed repeatedly for their excellent work and I'm particularly proud of the outstanding care staff at both our hospital sites have delivered to patients during the last eight months. I want to start by reminding the committee of the vision of the Royal Brompton and Herefield, which is to be the UK's leading specialist centre for heart and lung disease, developing services through research and clinical practice to improve the health of people globally. Delivering the highest possible care to our current patients and ensuring that we can continue to do this in the future has been the driving force for the board. And we believe that the merger with Guy's and St Thomas's is the best way to take forward a partnership that we've had for more than three years. Healthcare is...
Sorry, sorry, point of order, point of order. Sorry Chair, it's a point of order, this is not a merger, it's an acquisition, right? You've put it in your own documents, please refer to it as an acquisition.
Please councillor Henderson, I would, I like our guest to speak to the full. Then if you have any comments at the end, please, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you councillor. Healthcare is changing radically and will look very different over the next 10 years. The introduction of new technologies, genomics, new therapies. For the Royal Brompton to maintain its leading position as an academic hospital, it needs to evolve and change. Covid has accelerated the transformation of models of care. Many of our respiratory patients now receive their biological treatments and intravenous drugs at home rather than having to come up to the hospital each time they need a treatment. More patients are speaking to their clinical teams from home or work rather than having to travel to the hospital. It's also illustrated to the general public the importance of collaboration between clinicians, scientists, universities and industry in solving health problems. And we have a history over several decades, the collaboration between academics at Imperial College and clinical teams at the Royal Brompton have made an immense contribution to transforming the lives of patients with diseases such as cystic fibrosis. This is an achievement which we should all celebrate. In spite of the huge advances in treatment and prevention during the past 30 years, there is still so much more to do. Heart, circulatory and lung disease is still caused just under 50% of all deaths in the UK. Heart and lung disease and their causes are major contributors to the stark health inequalities which exist in London and the UK globally. Children born today in the poorest households can expect to live up to 14 years less than those born in the most well-off households. It's also important for members of this committee and the local public to understand that about a third of our patients treated at the Brompton live in North West London and are represented here today. But two thirds live in the rest of London or beyond. I'm now going to talk to, hand over to Robert Craig, the Director of Development and Partnership, to talk about our proposal with Guy's and St Thomas's. Robert?
Thank you Richard and good evening everyone. It's good to be able to participate in your meeting. We're proposing merger structured as an acquisition with Guy's and St Thomas's for a number of reasons. Firstly, it will bring stability and resilience to our services after many years of uncertainty about their future. We will become part of one of the largest healthcare organisations in the NHS and one with a very stable history. One of the catalysts for our collaboration was to pool our considerable resources to build a strong congenital heart disease service for patients of all ages that could not only comfortably meet all national standards, but also, and I think this part is crucial, enable the expert teams who work together so successfully now to remain together in the same organisation in the future. Secondly, the scale of our new organisation will support the development of greater subspecialisation as well as investment in the next innovations and in future technologies. And thirdly, we know that we'll be able to sustain the important characteristics of Royal Brompton services and that specialist care across a patient's whole life and a supportive academic clinical culture as we expand the academic opportunities that are available to our specialists. Can I have the next slide please? So from those strong foundations, we see the potential for those services to grow together across the whole spectrum of heart and lung disease. Importantly, both trusts share the same ambition of a world-leading centre that's able to respond to the healthcare challenges that Richard's already described. Not as an isolated ivory tower, but at the heart of a system of care for patients with cardiac and respiratory conditions and one which will attract the strongest academic and biotechnology partners and be an asset not just for London, but we believe for the whole country. Can I have the next slide please? Richard mentioned at the start that the collaboration between the Royal Brompton and Herefield and Guy's and St Thomas's began more than three years ago and I've listed on this slide some milestones on that journey. In July 2017, it was a joint proposal for the future provision of congenital heart disease services. In the following year, articulating the much broader possibilities of our collaboration across all our areas of clinical and academic work in a feasibility study and when we last came to present to the forerunner of this committee. And then a year ago, setting out the strategic framework for how we could develop, deliver our joint ambition. In January of this year, the Board of NHS England and Improvement announced the proposal for the trusts to merge and we're now in a position where we'll be ready to become a single organisation and as councillor Henderson has reminded us, as a statutory acquisition in February of next year. Our watchwords though will be continuity and stability with minimal disruption to existing teams and services. There are some planned governance changes to reflect the new organisation. An increase in the Council of Governors at Guy's and St Thomas's to include more than half of the Royal Brompton and Herefield governors. An expanded Board of Directors. And Royal Brompton and Herefield will in its entirety become a single and indeed the largest operating unit within the Guy's and St Thomas's group. Can I have the next slide please? Before handing over, there are some misconceptions that I'd like to address. As Richard has already said, Royal Brompton Hospital is not closing. We expect to be providing specialist heart and lung services from our current site for at least 10 years. We will continue to work with neighbouring hospitals in North West London as we do now, whether that's at Imperial College Healthcare, Chelsea and Westminster or the Royal Marsden, where we're delighted to be working now to formalise our joint thoracic oncology service for the future. We want to maintain our academic ties with Imperial College. We'll be providing, we'll still be providing heart and lung services to patients from Kensington and Chelsea and across North West London, whether in Chelsea or indeed if our services do move in the longer term. And finally, our two organisations coming together is not the trigger for service moves. Any proposal to move services in the future will be subject to a separate and formal public consultation process. A process we expect NHS England to initiate for congenital heart disease and children's services next year. But we expect to continue to have a dialogue with this committee about services at Royal Brompton for many years to come. And if I could have the next slide please, I'd like to hand over to Helena Bridgeman to give a different perspective on some of these issues.
Thank you Robert and thank you councillor for inviting me to this meeting. For those of you who don't know me, I have been a patient governor at the Royal Brompton Hospital since June 2018 and by profession, I am an adult and children's trained nurse, having worked clinically in the NHS for more years than I dare mention, mainly in cancer care across all ages. However, I must make it clear that my being here tonight is to speak as a patient, not as a governor, a patient who required world-class care and what that means in reality. I think the common ground in this room is that we are all or will be past, present, longer term or future patients. So keeping that uppermost in my mind and conscious of time, my focus will be on those core things that can make all the difference to the care and safety of patients. You will see my slide here, I'm not going to kill you with PowerPoint, but I think sometimes it's more helpful to look at things visually as you can plot my route through the National Health Service System. I had ECMO six years ago at the Brompton and for those unfamiliar with this cutting-edge treatment, it provides life support, it redirects blood out of the body to make the lungs and heart work via a tube and the blood is oxygenated in a small machine and then it's returned back into the body, all very sci-fi. In my case, I needed it because I had pneumonia and the scale of my infection meant my lungs stopped working and I ended up in respiratory failure. In fact, I needed it for six weeks, which I believe was quite a long time in 2014. And the staff at the Brompton with all their expertise undoubtedly saved my life. However, the clinical team at my local hospital, and that's outside of London, played an equally important part in saving my life as they made that referral call to the team at the Brompton in time for the ECMO to work. That team had the expertise and humanity to acknowledge their limits and ask for help from their specialist colleagues at the right time. So despite the odds, I survived. I was transferred back to the care of the team who had looked after me before transferred to London. And then I started the long road to recovery with the help, as you can see, of the local community and rehabilitation teams so I could eventually return to work. However, and this is not, this is truly not meant to sound like a list of woes, but it is the reality of complex care, that as a result of the original illness, I have since needed specialist orthopaedic care for a broken ankle, heart surgery for a heart valve that was damaged by the original infection and emergency kidney surgery, which required a hospital with an A and E and a renal unit, all as a result of the original illness. At this point, you may have noticed something missing from this slide. A smooth flow of communication and information as it became more and more clear that no one hospital had the full picture of what had been going on over the last six years. The individual teams were fantastic, absolutely fantastic and I hope I'm proof in the pudding, but they had no way of rapidly attaining this information except for X-rays and scans from the other hospitals who had looked after me. So where am I now aside from speaking to you all? I'm keeping well, thanks firstly to all the research going on to understand more about the fallout from ever more complex conditions and their treatments like the ECMO I had. And as importantly, having verbal and IT home monitoring in place such as blood tests, online assessments and consultations. As Covid, as we all know, has meant I have had to suspend planned treatment for the time being and we've all had to do things in different ways. All this has given me the sense that we as patients and carers are going through a huge period of change in the NHS and will definitely be relying more and more on different ways of care and follow-up rather than what has served us well and has been the norm for so long. So my final take-home point is that I started with one major problem in my lungs, but I am in fact the sum of many different parts, in fact a system of care. Compassion, collaboration and coordination of care closer to home have figured large in smoothing my passage. The staff at the Brompton provided me with superb world-class care, but the story did not end there. So what I have experienced firsthand as a patient and a nurse is how important it is to be cared for by coherent and integrated teams and services that can treat many different conditions and needs at many different levels and can also provide coordinated aftercare to both local and more distant patients. Thank you.
Thank you very much Helena for that really powerful personal reflection and reminder of why we do what we do. Those of you who've walked up Dubhouse Street recently will have seen the work going on to build a state-of-the-art imaging centre which will eventually look something like this and will open later next year. This has been funded by investment against a loan against the eventual sale of Chelsea Farmers Market. So the way ahead, this is an exciting new chapter for our patients and staff. I've talked about the changing face of healthcare and how the hospital needs to evolve to keep being the best for the patients that need us. We will continue to work closely with university scientists and industry to discover and test new treatments and with colleagues in North West London to ensure our patients have access to the best practice. Finally, I want to introduce Professor Ian Abbs, who is the chief executive of Guy's and St Thomas's to say a few concluding words. Sorry Gareth, I thought you were going to give a five-minute warning or...
Please, no, it's okay, please do continue, we have a little bit of time, thanks.
So we have just Professor Ian Abbs, the chief executive of Guy's and St Thomas's, who is going to say a few concluding remarks. There are no more slides.
Uh, thank you very much, Mark Richard. Um, if we take the slides down, please. So, uh, councillor, councillor Elnagi and other councillors of the Select Committee and also of the council. Thank you very much for the invitation to be with you this evening. My name is Ian, Ian Abs. I'm a transplant doctor by background. Consultant at Guy's and St Thomas's for a number of years, a professor in KCL. And I'm the chief executive of Guy's and St Thomas's. And I will be the chief executive of the future joint organisation. I'm absolutely delighted to be here this evening. I've always had, we've always had a very positive engagement with our councils locally and across London. And really see the importance of the relationship with our council and council of colleagues. Uh, as colleagues have mentioned, we've been working together with the Royal Brompton and Herefield for a number of years. In very close collaboration for three years. One example of that was a very close collaboration on the development continuation of the ECMO service. This very specialised care, um, uh, that Helena mentioned, but I think would have been under some threat. We not work together as two organisations. Uh, and we are one now of the largest providers of this highly specialised care together in Europe. Uh, the benefits of the relationship have convinced our organisations that coming together. Um, uh, we can be at the size. Many of you will know this absolutely, that nowadays, uh, medicine is a complex, um, uh, specialty. Uh, and, uh, if you look at the best, um, uh, in the global healthcare world. They are usually large organisations where they have the expertise to subspecialise in the absolutely uh, uh, narrowest field sometimes to give the best care to patients. And that's what we want to do, to have excellence together. Um, uh, and the shared expertise of our clinical teams to improve the care um, for patients, um, with heart and lung disease. At the moment, heart and lung disease, as you've heard, um, we haven't beaten it. There's more to do. And if anything, that's been amplified by the terrible effects of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, we will provide in London, one of the world-leading heart and lung care research and, um, education centres for the population, the diverse dense population of London, um, for years to come. I, I recognise concerns, some of which have come up, um, uh, already in the chat room. And I'm very happy to get into those, uh, in conversation and questions. Um, this is about bringing together two strong organisations. But also two strong organisations that have the financial capability to invest in some of the technology which costs millions of pounds. We are making an investment that will be, uh, over the next few years where we will put new technology, um, into the Royal Brompton and Herefield and at Guy's and St Thomas's electronic systems that allow us to, um, care for patients. Uh, and ensure that the type of information deficit that Helena referred to no longer happens, but with patients at the centre of that technological revolution. Uh, this is a merger, uh, coming together of two partners, equal partners. Um, and, uh, the future.
Point of order, point of order, sorry. You keep referring it to as a merger and it's an acquisition. I've raised that twice. This is the third time. Okay?
I'm happy to.
Thank you councillor Henderson.
Very happy.
It's okay, continues, continue prof.
Um, the, um, uh, the future has already been discussed. It's subject to consultation around both around, uh, any service changes. Um, uh, the research link is as important to me. I'm an academic clinician. Um, the research links with Imperial College are very important. And I know, uh, the professor Weber will refer to those later. Uh, and also the partnership with other members of the NHS family, uh, the Royal Marsden in particular. Uh, on the lung cancer pathway with Chelsea and Westminster and other organisations of North West London. Where we will be, um, uh, remaining for many years to come. Uh, as a major provider of care in North West London. And we're committed to, uh, engaging collaboratively with the NHS colleagues, with our local authority partners and with other stakeholders. Um, so delighted to be here, uh, councillor, councillor Elnagi and happy to take questions later.
Um, thank you, um, thank you so much for this concluding, uh, remarks as Robert said. Um, yeah, um, um, I, I don't want to, um, take any question at this moment. I hope people who are listening, including myself, I have one question, uh, later. Um, so I will keep it, uh, as short as possible. So without further ado, uh, we'll move to the next presentation from Imperial College. Uh, healthcare trust in Chelsea and Westminster Hospital, which I understand will be provided jointly. And, uh, and this joint presentation will be then followed by Professor Weber speaking on behalf of Imperial College Faculty of Medicine. Uh, as is, um, our linked presentation, I will be grateful as well if we can keep to the time of ten minutes max. But of course, if the, uh, there is a lineage there based on the flow of the, uh, your, uh, presentation. So please, uh, the Chelsea, the team, uh, Dr Cleber, you want to start?
Hello, thank you. Good evening. Thank you so much and good evening everybody. And thank you for the introduction. As you say, this first five minutes will be a, a double act across Chelsea and Westminster Hospital, NHS Foundation Trust and Imperial College Healthcare NHS Trust. My name is Bob Kleber. I'm a paediatrician and the director of strategy, research and innovation at Imperial College Healthcare. And I'm going to be joined, uh, by Nicola Grinstead, who's leading work across West London Children's Healthcare Alliance and, uh, halfway through this. So I guess just reflecting on, uh, what we've heard, uh, I thought, uh, Richard's comments around inequalities and Helena's, uh, really important patient story really take us to the heart of what this work needs to be about. And our plans that we have been working on in collaboration with Imperial College London are very much designed to meet the health needs and address the health inequalities within our local population in North West London. And this work has to not be about organisations, it has to be about patients, residents, citizens, our local communities and the population we're here to serve. And we believe that that's best achieved by preserving and developing the long-established North West London networks of specialist respiratory and cardiovascular care. And colleagues from the Brompton rightly talked about collaboration being right at the heart of it. This needs to have medical education and research, uh, entwined with it. And we know from all the work we've done over decades is that has led to significant improvements in adult and paediatric care. But also having impact nationally and internationally. So I'm just going to pass on to Nicola, who's going to talk a little bit about some of the details of the work we've been doing.
Good evening everyone and thanks, um, Bob for, um, starting us off. And I'm Nicola Grinstead and the managing director for West London Children's, um, Healthcare. And building really on the key principles that Bob has already outlined about what is important to us in, um, North West London in terms of meeting the health and wellbeing needs of our population. We thought it would be helpful to highlight to this meeting, very specifically through the lens of cardiology and respiratory services, which obviously is the main interface between ourselves and, and the Royal Brompton. Some of the key areas of focus and collaboration across Imperial College Healthcare, Chelsea and Westminster and Imperial College right now. Uh, Bob's outlined our commitment to making sure that the needs of our, um, population are met. Um, our commitment to tackling health inequalities to ensuring that services are developed around patient need. And to breaking down organisational boundaries to ensure, um, good access to the full spectrum of, of healthcare, um, services, including specialist provision. And we're doing that very specifically and through making sure that we have a new purpose-built, um, cardiovascular and respiratory centre for adults at Hammersmith Hospital. Um, we've already launched an integrated children's healthcare network, so the West London Children's Healthcare Alliance, which focuses on making sure that children have equal access at the time they need it to the full range of healthcare services from primary care right through to the specialist services and that we access through, um, the Royal Brompton. And also, um, we've launched this year, a new academic centre for child health through Imperial College, which will help us to make sure that we're really developing clinical services hand in hand, um, with research and, and educational, um, focus. Um, it's important, I think, in, in highlighting these three, um, examples to identify that actually we already collaborate hugely with Royal Brompton colleagues in this space, whether that be clinically or academically. And I think these examples highlight the depth of the collaboration that already exists within, um, North West London. I think, uh, we view the collaboration between ourselves and the Royal Brompton as a highly valued and hugely impactful, um, collaboration. And if I focus on children's as just one example of that. I think we can say that what we have in place is a highly sophisticated and really mutually beneficial network of care provision, which has genuinely evolved over time directly to meet the needs of children that we serve within North West London. Others have already, um, commented and I wish also to emphasise on the fact that the pandemic has served simply to amplify the importance of that collaboration. And I think, um, both patients and our staff would lose out in the absence of that, um, continued collaboration. I think it's reassuring therefore to hear, um, commitments from colleagues, both at Guy's and St Thomas's and at the Royal Brompton and to ongoing collaboration. And in this context, I want then to emphasise again, our ongoing commitment to the provision of excellent care in North West London for North West London patients. And to collaboration with Brompton colleagues, both now, and I think worth highlighting very specifically this nuance and in the future, if and when Fulham Road services, um, relocate. Um, in such a way that the health needs of, uh, North West London patients can continue to be appropriately met both with excellence and ease of access. And I'll hand you back to Bob, um, to conclude our presentation.
Thanks so much Nicola. And just really one final important point, I think, for councillors and local residents to uh, be aware of is, you know, we really welcome the approach agreed by the NHS England Board in the January twenty twenty papers that, uh, Robert mentioned earlier, uh, two really key points. One is the provision of support for North West London in finalising our clinical strategy and developing investment cases to provide fit-for-purpose facilities at St Mary's, Hammersmith and Charing Cross. And all three of those hospitals have been named in the hospital infrastructure programme, uh, which is an important national programme to make sure that local residents have the facilities that they need. And secondly, uh, the commitment to establishing a clinical transition board with the purpose to guarantee continuing support for secondary and tertiary provision at other North West London providers. And we think that these are two really important points that will hopefully, uh, offer some, uh, some support, uh, i- in, in this discussion. So, um, I'll hand them back to the chair.
Um, thank you so much. It's, uh, for this concise and prompt, uh, overall, uh, view of your position. Um, I can see the element of, uh, collaboration is very prominent there. And the same as the, uh, taking into, uh, what we are going through at the moment with this pandemic. That's, uh, has amplified this, the importance of this, uh, collaboration. Um, so now, um, I, I will move on to, uh, Royal Brum, Royal Marsden NHS Foundation Trust, please. Uh, so I would like to invite, um, the presenter, I think, uh, Charles Alexander, I think, is presenting. Or who's presenting from the Royal Marsden?
That's right, Charles Alexander.
Yes, okay. Please, uh, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, uh, everybody. Um, it's a great pleasure to represent the Royal Marsden, which I, Royal Marsden NHS Foundation Trust, which, which I chair. Um, and I'm pleased also that the chief executive of the Royal Marsden NHS Foundation Trust, Dame Cali Palmer, is also in attendance at this meeting. Um, of course, we are the Brompton's most immediate neighbours. Uh, as indeed is our academic partner of the Institute of Cancer Research on the other side of the, of the Brompton's frontage on the Fulham Road. And not only have we been in the Fulham Road since eighteen seventy, uh, but, uh, we intend to continue to invest, uh, throughout this whole period, both in our site in Chelsea and in our site in Sutton. The observations that our trust has on this merger are firstly, of course, we respect the the will of the two boards of, of the respective trusts, uh, Guy's and St Thomas's and the Royal Brompton to pursue what they consider to be in the best interests of their patients. Um, our principal observation therefore contain, uh, it concerns the future of our patient provision on our site and our partnership with, uh, the Royal Brompton. And indeed with, through Royal Marsden Partners, through the rest of the network of the Cancer Alliance to which we provide and have provided throughout the COVID pandemic in particular, a very joined-up treatment pathway. And we wish to build on that and invest in it. We have, as also already been mentioned, a high-quality joint lung and thoracic service in Chelsea. Uh, we serve a third of patients across London for lung diagnosis and treatment, particularly in cancer, of course. Uh, and as I mentioned, we've been working closely together in the pandemic with Brompton teams working in our theatres and CCU facilities supported by our clinical teams and patients. And the most important thing that I've heard, I think, this evening is that the Brompton is not closing. Uh, indeed, Guy's and, uh, Thomas's and other partners wish to maintain and increase investment for the patients for at least a decade. Well, a decade in the cancer world is a very long time indeed. Uh, in the last five years, we have seen unbelievable developments. And for us, our partnership with the Brompton is deepening. We already have one of the main trial centres in the NHS and the largest number of patients on targeted treatments in the UK. And our plan is to retain our joint service in Chelsea following the, uh, merger or through acquisition of the Royal Brompton and Guy's and St Thomas's. Uh, continuing to use both the Marsden and the Brompton estate to deliver outstanding patient care and treatment. Particularly of course, in the treatment of cancers, respiratory cancers and lung cancers. But I want to mention the fact that, uh, it's already been mentioned of research. The way to tackle the challenges of, of cancer and of our league tables in the world is simply to develop a absolutely first-rate, uh, lung and cancer provision and early diagnostic provision, which will immediately solve through research developments of treatments in cancer and diagnosis of cancer. Thus, this presents to us an opportunity to pull together our treatment and cancer research with the Institute of Cancer Research on the Fulham Road. So I think going forward, looking to the future, it is extremely important that we continue to discuss with the Royal Brompton and the council the possibility that in the future, we are able to invest in parts of possibly the Royal Brent, Brompton estate for healthcare delivery for our patients in partnership with the Brompton long-term. Now, I'm conscious of the fact, I think that I might have had my camera off throughout, so I apologise. I was trying to save the bandwidth of the council. I've now turned it back on, so hopefully you can see me. But in some.
Acceptable.
In summary, uh, the Marsden is a loyal partner of the Brompton. A important, a very important investor in the, uh, health economy of Chelsea and of the Fulham Road and will continue to be so uh, with our partners in RM Partners, Imperial, Chelsea and Westminster and others. Um, whatever the outcome of the, of the merger.
Five minutes have elapsed.
Thank you, and I will leave. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um. Okay, now we move to, um, um. Before moving, really, thank you so much for this, uh, uh, link of, uh, own research I must highlight there. It's, um, it's quite interesting and, uh, thank you again. Um, so, um, now I, I can see, uh, hands up, Mr Weber? Can't see you then.
I think I was expecting to give the Imperial College presentation before the Marsden.
I think I was expecting to give the Imperial College presentation before the Marsden.
Before, yes. So anyway, yes, you are right, Faculty of Medicine. Would you like to come in? There is still a continuation on that apology. So please. Yes, Professor Weber, yeah.
Thank you, councillor. And thank you for this opportunity to speak to the Royal Borough's Oversight Committee. I'm Jonathan Weaver, I'm Dean of the Faculty of Medicine at Imperial College, London. And I'm immensely proud of the association between Imperial College and the Royal Brompton, particularly over the last 25 years, which has really produced an unrivalled amount of research in cardiovascular and respiratory medicine, arguably the most impactful research of any university-hospital collaboration in the UK over this period. And I don't say that lightly, I say that based on the last analysis of hospital-university outputs, which was conducted by the RAND Organisation in 2015. Imperial College itself is a very successful research university, highly ranked globally as one of the most powerful research universities and repeatedly in the top 10 of universities globally. I'd like to really just ponder for a moment why the partnership between Imperial College and the Brompton has been so successful. And I think it's twofold. The first aspect is that the Brompton is a specialist hospital with a close focus on its research mission. And secondly, it is co-location between Imperial College and the Royal Brompton, which has really led to this opportunity to have this tight collaboration and this most fruitful research outcome. All of this then is put at some risk by the proposed relocation of the Brompton over a period of time to be determined to a site distant from Imperial College and distant from the powerful scientific base that the college represents. I'm grateful to Ian Abs at Guy's and St Thomas's for reassurance for the very short term about access for Imperial College researchers to continue their research at what will be Guy's and St Thomas's from first quarter of next year. My concern is over the very short medium term and the longer term about the nature of loss of co-location and hence loss of collaboration. And my concern is that we will lose the research staff which have been generating so much of this output. I believe that there will be a real challenge in maintaining this alignment over time. I'm particularly concerned about respiratory medicine. Cardiovascular medicine and its research is well-funded in the UK. Respiratory medicine, despite, and I urge NHSE to form the transition board, which was promised alongside this merger of organisations, to look at future patient services in West London in cardiovascular and respiratory medicine and their alignment to research and to education. Thank you, councillor.
Thank you so much, Professor Weber. It's a very touching link there, a very concise summary. It's actually raised many very important issues I hope we will consider as a committee and will share your concern as well. But we are all here as well for the benefit of our residents, for our country as well in terms of, especially Covid had taught us a lesson that's not to be taken lightly, that the absence of research of this calibre is vital for our economy, as well as not just our patients. But look what's happening around us. It's really expanding on undetermined scale. The economy, hitting the economy, hitting the education, researchers, it cannot be easily found. So I really, really share your concern, which I will be paying to a quite serious study and attention. Thank you so much, Professor.
Thank you.
Now, is there any one I want Dame Palmer? Would you like to add any comments or we can move to West London CCG now? Okay. I think now we have just a brief statement, I believe, from West London CCG over to you, Louise.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Louise Proctor, the Managing Director for West London CCG. We do not have a specific presentation this evening. The important information is from our range of colleagues from RBH and the acute sector and research across North West London. We recognise RBH is a much valued organisation in this local borough. West London CCG is not the lead commissioner for RBH. That is from NHS England, as a point I think it's important just to flag. The specific proposal and acquisition does not affect the range of services available. So therefore, as I understand it, this is a board decision for the organisations, but I welcome the trust's commitment to engage with stakeholders and governors throughout this process. Specifically, I note that any future service changes would be the subject of formal consultation. I welcome the commitment, I think it's very important, to continuing to support services at Imperial, Chelsea and Westminster and the Royal Marsden, and also the future clinical vision that has been shared with us this evening for residents in both Royal Borough of Kensington and Chelsea and across North West London, as was summarised by colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Louise, for this overall view. If Dr Seiden want to add anything, I'm happy to accept, we still have time. Do you want to add any comments?
No, I think in the interest of brevity, for such a long meeting, I'm very happy to confirm what Louise has said.
That's very kind of you. Thank you so much, Dr Seiden. Yeah. Now we'll move on to the NHS England and Improvement, please. And we have, so it's over to you, Hazel.
Yeah, thank you very much, councillor. And thank you first of all for inviting us to this important meeting and having the opportunity to talk about this important topic of the Royal Brompton and Guy's and St Thomas's merger proposal. I am speaking on behalf of NHS England and NHS Improvement, and I wanted to just start by highlighting the difference between the two elements. And although we now do have a single chief executive in Simon Stephens, we do have different roles and responsibilities. So NHS England's role is arranging the provision of a wide range of health services to the extent that it considers necessary to meet the reasonable requirements of the people for whom it is responsible. And it does that in large part through the commissioning of services. And NHS Improvement is responsible for overseeing NHS Foundation Trusts and ensuring that patients receive consistently safe, high-quality compassionate care within their local health systems that are financially sustainable. So those differences are important when it comes to a matter of this sort. So the NHS England is responsible for consulting on substantial service change and variations in service. And in fact, our engagement responsibility is quite broad. It can go from a smaller service change, which could be with a discussion with a limited group of patients involved, or it can be full-scale public consultation. And indeed, we are responsible for those sorts of public consultations where services move. And that is as equally true if services move from one site managed by a trust to another site managed by the same trust, as it is true if a service moves between trusts. So I know that it has been a voice concern that potentially with this transaction between the Royal Brompton and Guy's and St Thomas's, that services will move without the right degree of scrutiny. And I think it's really, really important to emphasise that that would not be the case. And it was very good to hear from both Ian Abs and Richard Grocott-Mason this evening that that's fully understood across Brompton and Guy's and St Thomas's. And indeed, we are working with Kensington and Chelsea Local Authority to set up a JOSK to consider public consultation for the movement of congenital, paediatric congenital heart services. And that will go properly through public consultation next year. So not all services, not all management change does actually lead to a change in how services are delivered. And there are many, many examples of how that is the case. And indeed, you have within North West London the merged organisation of Chelsea and Westminster. So these changes do happen. From a trust perspective, it is the responsibility of NHS Improvement as a regulatory responsibility to review transactions. And they can be arranged, but often it's an acquisition or merger. And that regulatory responsibility then leads to a level of scrutiny of the proposed change, really at the level of inherent risk that's considered for that service change. And they can be classed as small, material or significant. And material risks are considered to be effectively low risk. And they're judged upon the scale of the organisation and how well the organisation is run from a quality, finance and performance perspective. Once those assessments are made, they are reported nationally through the NHSI Provider Development Team to the NHSI Provider Oversight Group. And all of that process is underway for the Royal Brompton and Guy's and St Thomas's proposal. And then, as Louise rightly pointed out, then it's a matter for the boards, requirements for self-certification and post-transaction for further compliance regulatory activity. So that is the role of NHS Improvement. You were no doubt going to ask, so that regulatory process is underway. You might well ask as a committee therefore, what is the commissioner view? That might be all very well. And at a point in time, if services move from one site to another, that change will be properly consulted on. Nevertheless, you'd be reasonable to think we must have a view as a commissioner about this transaction, and indeed that is the case. We think that there are four very strong arguments that support benefit to patients in this transaction. And I want to emphasise benefits to patients. First of all, there is a really strong degree of clinical synergies across the core services of the Royal Brompton. So cardiac, respiratory and lung services, thoracic services. And those really play out as very specialist services. So with respect to respiratory, both the Royal Brompton and Guy's and St Thomas's provide respiratory ECMO. They are two of only five centres in the country that do that. They both provide interstitial lung disease services. They are two of only three trusts in London that provide that. And they are also severe asthma hubs. And again, two of just three severe asthma hubs in the capital. So in terms of very specialist services, we think that that scale has the opportunity to really drive excellence, subspecialisation, to be able to really support, provide the critical master support, both the fantastic vision that you've heard for North West London, but also other district general hospitals from outside of London. And I think it's important to remember that the Royal Brompton services and many of Guy's and St Thomas's patients come from Kent, Surrey, Sussex, Hertfordshire, Parkshire, a wider field. So this is really thinking also about services across that bigger geography. We think there are also benefits from being sitting within a wider organisation. So as patients, as clinical treatments improve, patients are living for longer. Patients with cystic fibrosis are now living considerably longer than before. And actually having access to maternity services, to older age services, to various endocrine services is really important for the comorbidity. And you may well say that we, obviously that's there within North West London through collaboration. But actually having the opportunity as a clinical body to be working alongside in the same organisation as that wider range is very powerful. There are economies of scale, IT. Ian Abs talked about some of the investments required for really truly modern service that are available through a large organisation that is well-led. And very finally, I would just like to say, clearly research is not the primary responsibility for NHS England, but we can really see the benefits of research. And organisations like the Crick Institute that looks at research from all of the universities across the capital, we would hope those sorts of partnerships are more possible going forward rather than less. So I realise I've gone over my five minutes, so thank you very much. I hope I've reassured you particularly on the point of service move and public consultation.
Thank you so much, Hazel, that's very considerate. I will take a question later unless I can see councillor Atkinson. Can it be delayed? We have one presentation, then we go for questions.
Well, that was my question, Chair. Now had an hour of presentations, I want to know if we actually get to ask some questions.
Yes, soon, five minutes or near there. But we had quite a good, very heavy presentations there, even if it is that concise. Thank you.
Ask questions.
Definitely. Thank you, councillor Atkinson. And now we will move without any more delay to our final presentation from Health Watch. I would like to invite Olivia, Chief Exec, please to present. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And I'm very conscious of the pent-up questions that have been binging around, and I will be extremely brief. So I am Chief Exec of Health Watch, my Chair Christine Vigars is here and a number of our local committee members. And we're bringing that local patient perspective. I have to say, the last time we sort of heard of this was the other year where we were approached by NHS England nationally, your specialist commissioning arm and the consultation you were doing with the specialist users of the Brompton. And then it's all gone rather quiet. So it's not surprising that we all feel rather sort of bounced and surprised into this. I think it's disappointing that there hasn't been a conversation and a dialogue. And I'm very happy to eat humble pie. If I have missed stuff, I'm bound to have done. But it does feel like this has been an excellent conversation between clinicians, possibly between, well, obviously between NHS England that has arrived at what sounds remarkable and marvellous. But it has certainly not involved patients, it's not involved the local community. You know, even just in that communication of what happens, where are we up to? What are the changes? What are the benefits that are coming through? And it does give me concern, sort of moving to the future, where, you know, these are major institutions and how can local people have a real voice in that? How can we effect change in the conversations that obviously as clinicians that are very well-grounded that you're having? And where do we sit in this? And I think obviously we'll have questions from councillors in a minute. So, you know, Health Watch are here to support that conversation. We are your channel for that, very much embrace. You know, we'll do our very best for you in that. But I have to say, it does feel like local people have been left behind in these conversations. And that's resulted in lots of worry and anxiety and concern, which perhaps we could have avoided or at least given an opportunity to share some of those concerns. And I won't say any more now. I mean, my Chair is on the board and we've got certainly plenty of questions to come.
Thank you so much, Olivia. It's very concise and yes. Actually, I make no apology giving extending the meeting by five minutes, listening to very important dialogue from all those who are already presented. And I am grateful to all of you. So I'm still in the neutral zone. I would like now to open the question time. Thanks to all those who presented. And I would like to ask the, I would like to invite the members of the committee first, if you don't mind, to, if you have any questions or comments about the report. And then I will open it to the, the other councillors who are present with us tonight. And then open it to the public. So please, a member of the committee, if you have any questions, we start with councillor Williams, please first, then councillor Adrice.
Thank you, thank you very much, chairman. I know that during the first wave of the pandemic, the Brompton played a crucial role in supporting seriously ill patients, partly through ECMO. And I wondered what its contribution is at the moment. And if it wasn't there, where would the capacity be?
Thank you, councillor Williams. Who would like that question? I think, can I take two more questions from the committee, then we will respond, if you don't mind? Yeah. Councillor Adrice, please, your question.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, I have more than one question.
You can have two?
I actually have more than two.
Can you ask two, your first two questions, please?
Okay. My first question is, you say, and it's been said that the Brompton will not close for a decade. A decade is 10 years. So what happens after 10 years?
Okay, next question?
My next question, well, I have to pick between.
You can come back to it later.
Yeah, okay. My, my next question is, can someone from the Brompton tell me, how is the staff morale now that they know this is going on? Can I squeeze another one?
All right, yes, it's very short.
Okay. My third question, it's on, from page four. You talk about, they talk about, they looked at all, a lot of options, and this is the best option. Can someone please walk me through the options that they thought were not good enough? And I'll, I'll keep my other two questions for later.
Thank you so much, councillor Adrice. Yes. Yes, please.
Is that all the questions? So if I start, Richard Grocott-Mason again, if I start with the current contribution to that was asked by councillor Williams. The Brompton is continuing to work very closely with the North West London ICS in terms of provision of critical care and ECMO services. So the, the number of ECMO beds has been expanded to an ask of 30 beds. And this is compared to our original ask of five. And we're currently running in the second wave of about a dozen patients on ECMO in the intensive care units. So we are still providing that. And as we've said, the services are not going anywhere. And we will continue to provide that care in collaboration with not just Guy's and St Thomas's, but Imperial and all the other hospitals in North West London to deal with the pandemic. If I take the next question around, there was a question about staff morale. I think that considering everything that the staff in the NHS have been through over the last nine months and all of the disruption, not just to their working lives, but also to personal lives. Remember, we have quite a lot of staff who are also of European origin. And they have families back in Europe and the travel restrictions where previously they've been able to go back. That's having an impact on their, their lives. In terms of the merger, which is what we're talking about, the, we've had a huge amount of engagement. We're in the process.
Sorry, point of order, point of order. Sorry to correct you. It's an acquisition. It's the fourth time I've said it, okay?
Okay, I think we've made, we've heard the point, councillor Anderson. But a merger structured as a statutory acquisition, it's a little bit more of a mouthful. We are not pretending that.
Councillor Atkinson, thank you, Anderson.
We're not hiding that fact.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm just asking.
You made your point.
I just want people to refer to it as an acquisition and not as a merger, okay?
Maybe I could ask you a question as to why you're so bothered about it being an acquisition as opposed to a merger?
But maybe we'll come back to that later in my questioning, okay?
The, the, so the question around staff morale and engagement, there's been a, an awful lot of engagement with a whole load of events that have been going on for a long period of time. Where over the last two months, we've been in the CHUPY consultation. And staff have questions. We've answered hundreds of questions from our staff. Quite appropriate questions about their employment, about their job and everything. But what we have noticed is that actually there is a shift in mood to excitement around the opportunities that are provided by being part of a bigger organisation that has more resilience, has more support for some of the activities that are difficult to, to provide in a smaller trust. And one of the things that jointly we will be doing is to implement an electronic health record. And the investment in that will be something which again has generated a lot of excitement of staff because that will be part of the, the enabler of transformation. I think probably the options is quite a long answer in terms, the Brompton has been moved. I said, I've been at the trust for 20 years. When I was appointed in 1999, Brompton and Herefield were both closing and were going to move to Paddington Basin. And there had been a long history since that time of looking for a solution. And the, what we found in the partnership with Guy's and St Thomas's over the past three years is a partner that is, suits the fit of the organisation in the way that we've worked through. I think, Ian, perhaps I could pass to you about the what happens after 10 years question.
Yeah, very happy to try that, Richard. I mean, the first thing is, is 10 years is quite a long time in healthcare. And if I reflect back 10 years on how care is organised and delivered now compared to 10 years earlier in my career, it's going to be very different. I mean, my own feeling is that there will be healthcare delivery of some type on the Sydney Street side of the Royal Brompton Hospital for many decades to come. I mean, one of the big things that's happened most was a big investment in imaging and diagnostics. I mean, one of the things I would expect to happen fortunately for patients of the future is much more concentration on early diagnostics. So patients are seen earlier, particularly for complex conditions, cardiac respiratory cancer particularly. And I could well see that being built up because actually much of the healthcare of the future will probably be based on diagnostics and the types of technology we have now. In terms of the, the inpatient beds, which is one, only a very actually small component of healthcare, much. Just to give you an idea, I think we have about 200,000 inpatients a year at Guy's and St Thomas's. We have 2 million contacts with patients a year. So actually, most of care is actually ambulatory rather than inpatient. It's actually coming to the hospital for tests. Some of that will change because fortunately patients won't have to come so much to test as they do in, they have done in the past. So what shape that facility looks like in 10 years' time? I can't tell you. I suspect there won't be beds there or as many beds there as there are at the moment. But some type of healthcare facility, partly because of the things we've talked about already, both the importance of working with our partners in North West London, but also the things that Professor Weber said, for example, around types of research. Most research in the future, I suspect, will be done with citizens, with patients in an ambulatory context rather than inpatient beds. So I don't know if that helps councillor, but that's, that's the shape of that, of that answer, I think.
Yep, thank you very much. Councillor Shohan? You put your hand up earlier?
Thank you. My question is around consultation. So I think Hazel mentioned earlier on that consultation will start in the new year. And that's just for paediatric cardiac services. Now, what about the aspects that Dr Clayber, Dr, Professor Weber brought to the table about the North West London respiratory services? When's the consultation going to take place with regards to the adult services that the Imperial team have talked about?
Councillor, do you want me to answer that question?
Yes, please, Hazel.
Yeah, happily. I mean, there will only be consultation at the point that it's proposed that a service moves. If there's no change to a service and it takes a significant amount of planning, both in the capital planning, the availability of capital, et cetera. Only when there are really firm plans for the movement of service will they be consulted on. But at the point that a service is required to, or it's proposed or wanted to move, then that public consultation has to happen. So the paediatric congenital are the services where those plans are advanced. And that's the purpose of the consultation.
Sure. And can I just follow up on that?
Yes, please, you do.
So in terms of the 10-year, councillor Adrice mentioned, you know, what's going to happen after 10 years? It's quite, you know, it's quite clear that after 10 years, there's going to be some, during that time, and there's going to be some service change. And sadly, in the papers, it mentions within north to six years, there'll be some service changes. So wouldn't it be kind of prudent to plan ahead and plan for these consultations now? Because these service changes are going to happen according to this document.
Can I have a go? I mean, the only service changes which will happen in terms of service moving are the ones around paediatric services, which will be subject to the consultation that's been highlighted next year by NHS England. The other, the other service changes and improvements and transformations that will happen are things like I've highlighted where we previously had a lot of patients coming up to the hospital to have an injection of antibiotics or injection of biological treatments. Because of the accelerated transformation that, that has been partly as a necessity from this, those patients now get those treatments at home. That's not a service change that requires a consultation. I think most people would recognise that as a, as an improvement in the way that we are treating patients. So there is no planned move of adult respiratory services, inpatient services that currently exist at the Brompton away from the Brompton. Indeed, in the imaging centre, the interventional bronchoscopy suite that will be built there. And the service that we've heard about with the Marsden, the joint thoracic lung cancer service, will be enhanced in those facilities.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the committee would like to ask a question? I have one question from councillor Thaxter. She says a flu, she cannot say it. She sent it to me. How this, how will this merger benefit local residents? So what's the impact, or long-term impact?
Again, I can have a go. I think the, I think that the, what we've articulated is that what we are looking to do with, with partners. And again, we've heard this is not something the Brompton does alone. We don't deliver primary care or even the, the most of the secondary care. But our mission is to improve heart and lung medicine care for patients, to improve population health and to support the providers of heart and lung disease. As we've indicated, there's an awful lot more to be done that whether the Brompton is in Chelsea or whether the Brompton is in Westminster Bridge, will not have an impact on the most important thing, which is the population health, primary care and the, the inequalities that we spoke about, air quality, all of those things that contribute to the overall health of the population. Those are the things which, where we need to, will have the biggest impact on the patients of, and the local residents of Kensington, Chelsea or anywhere else in London. What patients need, and again, as we've indicated, the model of care is that we are bringing people to a hospital facility less and less. There will be the development of community diagnostic hubs, patients making their own data, measuring their own data and wearables and moving to hospitals much less. What they need when they come to hospital is they need the safest, highest quality environment where they can have their operation or their intervention. And they may only need to come to the hospital for one week of their entire life.
Okay, thank you. Final question, then we'll move on to other councillors.
Chairman, yeah, my hand is up. If I may go ahead, thank you. Could I, I've got two questions.
Let's start with your first one, councillor Spalding.
Okay, this document that we have in front of us tonight, this briefing, not very much has changed since, you know, your illustrious predecessor councillor Freeman chaired an identical scrutiny to this in Chelsea Town Hall about three or four years ago. And I see very little notice has been taken of, of what the council and the residents raised at that time. This document, can I ask, who wrote this document? It's unsigned. Who, who wrote it? Which institution is behind it? And who's authorised it? It's very odd for a document to come to scrutiny like this, which has no responsible author on it. Can I ask that question?
We can take this one. I don't think this document is meant to be discussed here, councillor Spalding.
This is the briefing that we've been given.
It's Robert Craig here, councillor. I'm happy to address that for councillor Spalding. It's a joint document produced by Guy's and St Thomas's and Royal Brompton Hospital together about the status of the collaboration on the way to the transaction we're discussing this evening.
Well, I mean, it's very disingenuous. It doesn't say that. The heading just says Royal Brompton and Herefield. So, you know, I would like to. From somebody.
Sorry, councillor Spalding, do finish and I'll answer your question.
No, I just like to know who has produced this briefing.
Yeah, thank you. That's a fair point.
Well, it's on Royal Brompton and Herefield headed paper because we were the trust that was invited to this evening's committee. But the document and the material in it has been jointly produced by the two organisations.
Disingenuous.
Thank you. I think that's.
Can we have some names to it? That would help.
Yes, thank you, councillor Spalding.
You can have my name, councillor Spalding. I'm Robert Craig. I'm the director of development at the.
No, I think.
Foundation Trust.
Thank you, thank you. Points taken. I would like.
That needs to my main substantive question.
No, you have every right there and that's taken and noted. And for a quality purpose on reporter writing, we need a clearer, assigned to this document. I would take the final question from councillor Freeman, then we'll move on.
Uh, chairman.
Oh, do you, sorry, you have another question?
My two questions.
Yes.
But my substantive question is rather bigger than this.
Oh dear.
It's, if, if you unpick this document and the presentations that we've had this evening.
Yes.
It's a kind of thread which can be unraveled. And lots of residents have done that. Our residents are clever enough to get the theme, the historical theme that's going on here. And I'll have to be blunt about it. And it really involves three things. It involves the estate, the physical estate. It involves the acquisition or the takeover. And it involves the reason why, which, which has been given for all this to happen. And all of these have got big doubts in our residents' minds. We're bombarded with these questions. And somebody has to say it and put the question. And I will be putting it to leadership and I hope to this committee. The estate itself, of course, is controlled by our specific planning document. And we know this site, all of it, including the farmer's market, all of it will be for medical use in perpetuity as long as we're on this council. All of it will be for medical use in perpetuity as long as we're on this council. I look at one specific paragraph, and that is paragraph 12, number 6, on page 6. And that says that the Brompton will be transferring into GSTT in its entirety just as a clinical group, and will be reporting to the GSTT board. Now, that is clear evidence that this is a takeover and an acquisition, not a merger. Finally, the reasoning that has been given is there's been this problem of co-location of children's services. But as you read through the document, you see that co-location is not a problem at all. Because in the proposed new model, we're going to be co-located all over the place with different services. So the reasoning which leads to the acquisition, I think, the key point of all of this is that the, there is a phrase in here that says, on page 11, this is my last question, point 8, bullet point 4, it's very difficult to unravel all of this, but it does say.
We'll do it.
It's a financial opportunity to unlock the, the value of our estate.
Yeah.
Does, my question therefore is, given this spurious reasoning about children's services co-location, which we had last time.
Yeah.
Given that this is an acquisition, what is the meaning of that phrase, "to unlock the value of our estate"? That's my question.
Thank you, councillor Spalding. Yeah. And this is, will form part of our discussion later for making our recommendation. Thank you for probing into this, councillor Spalding. You have the right to conclude before I go to another question. Robert, you want to?
Well, there are, there are two points to counter the Spalding's question. The first is about co-location, and I'm sorry he thinks it's spurious, because it really isn't. The decision was taken by NHS England in 2017 that we could no longer provide congenital heart disease services for children from the Sydney Street site. They, those services would have to be provided from a comprehensive children's hospital service. And the only way that we can continue to keep the teams together, and I'm, I've said this before already, forgive me if, if I'm just repeating myself. But the only way that we can keep the teams together, that we think is at the core of the services that we provide to patients.
Disingenuous.
Is by moving those services together with those children's services to where they will be co-located at the Evelina Children's Hospital site, which is the St Thomas's and Evelina site at Westminster Bridge. So that's the real driver, the original catalyst, as I said in my comments at the beginning of the meeting, for exploring this collaboration. Going on to your second question, unlocking the value of the site, yes, it's about saying, but this will be done, clearly has to be done in collaboration with members of the council and with other people who have an interest and a role in regulating this activity. Parts of the estate, if it makes sense for the future of.
Oh, here we go.
Well, maybe you don't want me to answer the question, councillor Henderson. I'm quite.
Sorry, yeah, councillor Henderson, please.
I apologise. I didn't realise my microphone was on.
Please.
Do you want me to answer the question?
Please mute all your microphones, please.
So the example, the example I give is that we have, as, as the council knows, there's a, a planning consent that was granted a couple of years ago on the Chelsea Farmers Market. And that enables the, the trust, which owns the Chelsea Farmers Market at the moment, to sell that land, and it has a planning consent that enables it to be a mix of commercial and residential land once it's sold. We are reinvesting, thanks to the, the discussions with the council and the agreement with the council, we are reinvesting the proceeds of that into the new imaging centre that you can see going up on Dubfay Street. Now, that is my example of unlocking the value of the estate.
That's a clear explanation of that term. Now, I would like to open it to the, our fellow councillors outside the, the group, the committee. Councillor Spalding, I can see your hands up. Do you want to follow up? Or, because I need to give the others a chance now, if you don't mind, yeah? So I will go with, because councillor Atkinson was his hand first, then councillor Laurie, then councillor Anderson, please. So councillor Atkinson.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, it's, it's a multi-claws question, but it is a single question. I mean, and basically the summary of it, I want to know why all the hurry? I mean, when hospitals and clinicians are up to their ears fighting Covid at the moment, I think it's very wrong that this is being pushed through, and I suspect it's because they don't want to come up against organised opposition from clinicians. Secondly, where are they proposing to move the hospital to? There isn't a space-age facility yet alongside the Thames. So where are we going to move people to in the interim? Are we going to try and put the Marsden into, into a cupboard somewhere? The third aspect of it is, I understand that Southwark is opposed to the plan because it regards the site as already being overcrowded. And I do hope Kensington and Chelsea will follow the example of another borough and to illustrate, to come out against this line and sinker. There isn't a site to move to, and as someone else has said, ironically, we're going to have split-site operations for years and years to come. And that was the reason it was given for moving the children's facilities in the first place.
Councillor Atkinson, thank you so much for your questions. I'm glad you brought in the pandemic issue there. I think it's a valid, very strong valid point. I will take two more questions, and I will open it to the, so at least the, my guest can answer. Councillor Laurie?
Hello, chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, yeah.
Thank you. I'm going to keep my camera off because it affects my internet stability.
Okay.
My question is to the representatives of the trust. We are already well aware that planning permission has been granted by this council for conversion of this accommodation palace terrace, and also the land in Chelsea Farmers Market by the planning committee. We're aware of that. But my question's on the actual bulk of the site itself, which exists today as a hospital. Is the trust aware and conscious of the significance of the existing site to the Naylor review? And for the members of the public on this, who are not on this committee, the Naylor review sanctions the sale of NHS land and assets to generate estimates, let's say, £10 billion, £10 billion income to fund STPs and ICSs. And it's been endorsed by both NHS management and the government, hence why it's such a public concern. Is the trust aware and party to the discussions which have identified the Royal Brompton site as prime target for its sale, given its price tag estimated as circa £1 billion redeveloped? And my second question in relation to that is, how can you justify that such a sale of the existing site constitutes unlocking of the value when the site is going to be completely moved in 10 years' time? When, if you sell a site which is no longer providing any benefit to the community, should it close in 10 years' time, you're not unlocking its value for the community. You're unlocking it for your own financial gain because the services are not provided in this community anymore. Do you realise the significance of that and why it's causing so much frustration to the local community?
Sorry, I think you're muted, councillor Elnagi.
Thank you for inviting me, Robert. Councillor Anderson, the final question, please.
Yeah, hello. I've got quite a few, actually. I mean, I do agree with councillor Spalding's comments that there's a lot of fantasy in this document. I was chatting to some councillors in Southwark and the, one of the MPs over there. They haven't even been consulted on this. There's no planning permission being agreed for Southwark. So how can you promise us that this unit is going to be moved to Southwark? That's not true. It's disingenuous. And Richard, I'll come to you because you kept asking me about the difference between an acquisition and a merger. And I'm going to answer your question before I answer my question. Because with an acquisition, it's really clear that basically the root, the instrument, the legal instrument used by the board, you've done everything you can to steer clear of public participation and resident involvement. Now, after Grenfell Tower, Richard, the one thing that this borough learnt was that the TMO acted in a manner that ignored the wishes of residents, and look what happened, right? Did the, basically, if you look at the Bunstfield Oil Fire in 1981, the effects of the fumes on the residents did not become apparent for 30 years, and then the majority of the community had 30, had mesothelioma. Now, why isn't the Brompton Hospital concentrating on what they can do for those possible future patients? And why has it not even been considered in the document? I think the residents of Grenfell find the fact that you've decided to circumnavigate the public because you're not going to like the answer, right? Now, that's not a question. Why, why, basically, what we've seen here, this document, is the, the grass is always greener. If Fulham Football Club came to Chelsea and said, you know what? We want to create a world-class facility in Fulham. And the plan is, we'll take all your players, we'll sell off the stadium, we'll keep all the money, we'll call the new team Fulham, but I tell you what, we'll call a small dressing room Chelsea. It's disingenuous, and you have failed to connect with the local community. That is the Covid, number one Covid hospital in Europe. There's nothing wrong with the building. The maintenance staff told me that. Nobody wants this move. There's plenty of land on the Royal Brompton site to redevelop on site. Why don't they shut down Guy's and St Thomas's and move all the services over here?
Thank you.
Do you, hang on, my question is.
Question, please, yes.
Yeah, the question is, do you think your actions of discussing moving the hospital at this time of national pandemic reassures the public?
Thank you, councillor Anderson.
Can I respond to that as that?
It's your answer, yeah. Can you start from wherever you like?
I'll, I'll start from that, those kind of accusations at the end there, I think, from councillor Henderson. I, I think it's pretty below the belt to compare what we are trying to do with some of the disasters that, that you referenced, and I don't think that's even worthy of a response. I, I think there are some, there are some factual inaccuracies that clearly you haven't listened to what has been said through the meeting. That we are not discussing moving the Brompton Hospital at the current time. And nowhere does it say that the Brompton is moving to Southwark. So I think that the, you know, to, to quote you back your words, that is disingenuous. The point about our local residents going to be left behind, we are not changing services. When services move, there will be a public consultation. The public consultation about the movement of the paediatric services, for the reasons that Robert has outlined, will happen next year, led by NHS England. That requires, as was pointed out by councillor Atkinson, that the services are not moving because there isn't a place to move the services to at the moment. That is, that's exactly what we're saying, and Ian will come in and talk about the development plans on, on that. The, but that's exactly why the services are not.
Sorry, I can't hear you anymore.
I think, I think, I think Richard may have lost his internet connection. Can I, is Robert Craig here from?
Okay, Robert.
Can I pick up a couple of?
Yes, please.
Points. And the, the point about Southwark is probably quite important to make, because I think there is a misunderstanding about that. None of our ambitions are about creating a new facility at Southwark, which is where Guy's Hospital is. Our, our ambition, if it were to happen in about 10 years' time, would be a facility at the St Thomas's campus, which is at Westminster Bridge in the borough of Lambeth. I was at, I was at the Southwark Oversight and Scrutiny Committee meeting, I think it was at the beginning of last week, where there was a discussion about the proposed transaction between ourselves and Guy's and St Thomas's. And there were questions there from the councillors about the impact on their residents. As you'd expect, there was some question about the implications of two organisations coming together because there'd been a less than successful. I think this was a merger between King's College Hospital and Princess Royal University Hospital in Bromley. And they were worried about the consequences of that, and we were able to reassure them that this was a very different set of circumstances. So there was nothing said in that meeting by Southwark councillors who spoke to us that, that they were against our proposals. And it's important to recognise that there is no thought that we would move services from Royal Brompton Hospital at any point in the future to the Guy's Hospital site. The, the ambition that we've been discussing is, if it were possible, and subject to proper consultation, moving those services to new facilities at the Westminster Bridge site in the London Borough of Lambeth. But I think this is the point where maybe I would ask Ian to talk a bit about that campus, because I think people may be concerned about where, where the Brompton might move to if we go through that process in due course.
Thank you so much, Robert. I like now to move to my fellow councillors. Yes?
I've had my hand up for a very, very long time.
I'm going to you now, but councillor Mason. I just want to say three. Sorry, councillor Mason.
Yeah, I mean, I, all of the responses I've had here tonight, especially from the Royal Brompton and other trusts, tells me that you, you're just failing to understand what's actually happening here. And it's not that we don't want the provision of the best services possible. The objection is that you know better than we do. And, and that's, as councillor Henderson said, what the issue was at Grenfell, which I listen to every day, and we're all listening to every day here. It's not without, we're conflating the two, but on the, on the principle of the, the takeover. People have heard enough, and I was going to make some of the points councillor Spalding also made, and I won't repeat them, but, but people want a say in what happens in their area. It's not good enough that you professionals are telling us, the little people, and they like to represent that you know better than we do. Of course you know better than we do. You've got strings of letters after your name, and a lot of you on the border have been involved with banking and, and all sorts of different professional and, and industrial and financial areas. So obviously, you, from our point of view, you, we think that you feel superior to us. It's not that we can't understand. We're not stupid, and our residents are not stupid. And you're telling us that because the services are not going to be changing, and we would dispute that, many of us, you don't need to consult with our people. You don't have to consult with our communities. And that may have been good enough elsewhere, but it's no longer good enough in the Royal Borough, and it's certainly not good enough in North Kensington. Because even if you're making the best case in the world, if you're sticking it in people's faces and saying that you know better than we do, they're not going to be listening to you because they're listening to what's coming, coming out from the professionals in that inquiry every day. And then they now have a view of professionals who know better than we do. Well, you may know better than we do clinically, but you need to tell us why this is happening. You need to get residents on your side. You keep talking about residents and patients. You talk about them a lot, but you won't consult with them on the principle of moving the services to Guy's and St Thomas's, to Southwark. Because you probably know that they might not agree. They might agree with some of it, but you haven't asked them. You just think you know better than we do. You don't know better than we do. You may know better than we do medically, and I've got the hugest respect for the medical services because you save the life of my partner just over two years ago. But this is quite different. This is about you taking people with you and not just running roughshod over them.
Councillor Mason, thank you.
Councillor Elnagi, can I jump in there a second just to answer? And I completely understand the, the passion that colleagues on the council have.
Yes, Professor.
I mean, the first, just to be, I mean, clear, the, the first thing we're talking about is the coming together of Guy's and St Thomas's on and the Royal Brompton. That's what we're talking about at the moment. As perhaps, as Hazel Fisher outlined, the move of services is subject to future consultation. So we're not even at that stage yet. The, the first thing to be consulted on, if colleagues remember, like, you know, I take the points around some of the terrible things that happened around the disasters that we, we know about. But if I take you back to Bristol 25 years ago, the issue of paediatric cardiac surgery at Bristol that led to the review of paediatric cardiac surgery, and the bringing together very, very difficult conversations over the years. At one level, I'm afraid, we've been too slow to resolve this issue for paediatric cardiac surgery At one level, I'm afraid, we've been too slow, um, to resolve this issue for paediatric cardiac surgery, um, for far too long. And we are going to grasp the net on that, but it still goes to public consultation next year with the reasons that the complexity of paediatric cardiac surgery are such that the types of services you need to aggregate around them are significant and more than those, I'm afraid, that currently exist. And that's our commitment to wrap around those children, the totality of the services that they need. That is still subject to public consultation. All of these other services that have been talked about so passionately and understandably today are subject to public consultation. And I think, so I think there has been just important for me, councillor Elnargi, to emphasise that point. We collaborate as health services across very wide geographies. One of the benefits, I, on the local residents thing, is the understanding, particularly around the services to the patients of North West London. As Bob Claver has already referenced, the investment to go in to the hospitals around North West London, Chelsea and Westminster, St Mary's, Imperial Healthcare Trust, to provide better services than there are today, particularly focused around local residents. The, what we are particularly talking about are the national specialised services, um, uh, that are more likely to move than anything else. So I just wanted to get that point over. Public consultation over many years to come is right at the heart of what we, we will be doing.
Thank you so much, Professor. Um, I, I would like to call, uh, there is so many hands up, uh, I would like to call, uh, in order. I will call four and then hopefully you can ask your question. Uh, councillor Freeman first, then councillor Kamali, councillor Edinburgh, then councillor Healy, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. And, uh, thank you.
Thank you so much for your patience, we've been waiting.
Well, uh, this is very important and what is a few minutes in so many people's lives. Um, thank you very much to the presenters this evening, it's been very interesting. But I'm still left with the question which so many people have asked, what is the rush? We're in the middle of a pandemic, the worst in a hundred years. We keep on hearing that the services aren't going to move. But the problem is, once we have been taken over, once we, the Brompton have been taken over, the choices that are available to the Brompton are diminished. It's very difficult to say, well, we've got the services at Brompton, they're in Chelsea, but we'd much rather respiratory care, and it's very logical, went to the Hammersmith, for example, if it isn't going, um, to be able to stay on the site in Brompton. Now, that choice is taken away. So effectively, the reconfiguration of services is preordained without an ability for our residents to take part in it, to have their voices heard, for the patients to have their voices heard, because, uh, it, it's gone. We are a small subsidiary of a much larger trust. The specialists that we have at the Brompton are obviously, um, going to be far less independent. They're going to be part of a large organisation and healthcare is going to suffer. Now, I mean, we, we, there's been a great deal of frustration and a great deal of people feeling that they're not being listened to. As a former chair of this committee and as former governor of the Marsden, I spent a lot of my time talking to the other trusts. And everybody this evening, quite rightly, has been very polite. And I do hope that we can keep tempers cool. But the, the dissatisfaction from the other trusts is manifest when you talk to quietly and not in this sort of environment. I'd also like to say, well, fine, you know, the public have their voice and everything else. Uh, as the former chair, I wrote to Sir David Sloman to say, would it be possible uh, for Kensington Chelsea, which after all is the host borough, to discuss this? Uh, I felt it secretary to make sure that the letter arrived. You won't be surprised to hear, not only did he contact me, but my communication was entirely ignored. So please, don't tell me about public involvement. Don't tell me, uh, that this is in the public interest. This is some, uh, preordained strategy in order to take healthcare away from Kensington Chelsea and North West London.
Thank you councillor Freeman, thank you so much. Um, uh, so we'll take the other three questions, then we'll open it for, uh, the answers, please. Uh, councillor Kamali?
Thank you, Chair. And I, I would say thank you to councillor Freeman for making such an eloquent point just there. I think, uh, the question I really have, and firstly, I think I must actually congratulate the Royal Brompton. I know no one would be expecting that. But this is the first time that we have seen a council entirely united, not just Conservative, Labour and Lib Dem, but even the factions within the Labour Party are united on this matter. This is absolutely categorically a borough-wide issue. It is now a cross-borough-wide issue, as we're hearing from Lambeth and Southwark of, of the plans. I think it absolutely befuddling that a hospital that has been around for multiple hundreds of years has its future sewn up in merely a decade. As councillor Idris pointed out very eloquently, it was only, that's only ten years. And ten years to make such vast changes to our borough and to our residents and to future patients is not enough time. It is also not enough time to make this merger acquisition, as councillor Henderson repeats the point, an acquisition in such a confined time. I simply don't understand why the middle of a pandemic is the right time to do this. And as you will see, this council has put out a new supplementary planning document on the Royal Brompton. We are a hundred percent committed to that site remaining in medical use for generations and generations to come. It was a site that was granted land decades, hundreds of years ago, for exactly that purpose. It was not granted that land to be used for luxury accommodation and to be sold off to wealthy buyers. That's the fundamental of the site. And I would really request that all the people around the virtual table tonight put an answer to the question of why it has to be now. We can argue the merits of healthcare and we can argue the various changes to services which are coming. But we have to talk about why it has to be this winter of all times. Please, let's reconsider, take a moment. The building isn't going anywhere, as you, everyone's pains to point out. So let's make sure we do this properly. We are a borough that listens to our residents. Let's go out and talk to them properly as a united team to deliver the best thing for everybody concerned on that site in Chelsea for years to come. Thank you very much.
Councillor Kamali, thank you so much for, um, okay, councillor Edinburgh, please, and then councillor Healy.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Gem and Robert for your comments. I mean, I think, following on from some of the questions and, uh, comments this evening, particularly around the timing, my question is, why would the Royal Brompton Trust agree to a statutory acquisition by a trust that made a net loss of sixty-three million in the last financial year?
Thank you. Councillor Healy? Sorry to keep you waiting, it's very kind.
Sorry. Um, thank you, Chair. Um, I, I think much of it's already been said. I think one of the things that, uh, the Brompton fails to realise is the frustration that we all feel at the way this is being organised in secret, without us being involved in any way. It's not just the residents and the patients who are not being, uh, consulted, it's also us, the Royal Borough, Kensington and Chelsea. The only times that we've been able to discuss this publicly is when we've made a fuss and demanded that, that the Royal Brompton appears before us. They have not involved us directly at any stage. And that suggests to me that they are doing this in secret because they don't want to have it opened up to public scrutiny. We have still not been told why this is happening. We've been told vague ideas like it's the only way we can be sustainable. A question was asked earlier this evening about options that had been considered and there was no response to that. They are not being clear, they're not coming forth with what is really happening here. And I suspect it's got nothing to do with improving medical, uh, excellence, which we all recognise already exists at the Royal Brompton, it has more to do with land sales.
Thank you councillor Healy. I, I think I will open, there are two question, very, uh, two hands up. Uh, I will take them, councillor, uh, Peril Cox and councillor Wade. And then we'll go for the, uh, um, answering those questions.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, I'm, my first point is, you know, it's very decent of the consultation document to offer us a world-class, uh, respiratory and cardiac function. Uh, but we've already got one, thanks very much. Now, and I think that the real problem here is the consultation is taking place on the paediatric cardiac surgery point. And that's really a stalking horse for shutting down the whole institution, since the institution is actually only really viable, uh, if it's allowed to continue, uh, as is. Uh, and the danger is it's going to suffer from a death by a thousand cuts as the, the world-class staff who are already there trickle away during, because of the uncertainty of its future.
We can do this and we're here, they're going to be alright.
You're muted again, councillor Elnargi?
Thank you, second reminder. Uh, okay, councillor Wade, please.
Uh, I want to echo what councillor Beryl Cox said. I'm actually, uh, uh, an ex, a successful ex-patient of the Brompton Hospital, as is my sister and as was my mother. So this is a very personal concern for me. And one of the main points is that paediatric care as, uh, actually is care for life. Caring for an adult at a later stage is actually just trying to catch up. You're applying something which you could have done earlier. Paediatric care always represented, uh, the major, quite a large proportion of the finances of, of the Brompton. And if that is removed, you really do take quite a large proportion of their budget out and undermine its financial viability. And as councillor Beryl Cox said, if you remove that part, actually, people start moving away, they leave comfort, lose confidence. And this is a missed opportunity, not to combine services better with the Royal Marsden. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wade. Uh, yes, please, can we have the, uh, some, uh, comments or, uh, answers, please?
Well, councillor Elnargi, um, Ian, let me come in on a couple of points if I may.
Yes, please.
And absolutely, just to, um, reinforce, I think councillor Wade's last point, which is that, um, actually, the risk before us coming together as partners was exactly that, that the, if you remember, if colleagues on the council remember, the outcome of the safe and sustainable review, which was initially pre the N H S England board decision of twenty seventeen, which was to distribute in three directions, the paediatric cardiac service and therefore the impact on the rest of paediatrics, which would have been, as you absolutely say, councillor Wade, the kind of salami slicing, um, of the Brompton and inevitable decline. But one of the purposes of what we're trying to do is to, is to stop that and to actually keep the brilliant staff of the Royal Brompton and Herefield working for the benefit of patients. Um, the, the second point is, um, just to correct one of the points made earlier, um, we are two viable financial organisations. Um, uh, the I N E position of Guy's and St Thomas's, we, um, have a turnover of about one point, um, eight billion pounds. Um, and we have, for the last twenty-five years, uh, returned positive I N E positions. Um, what you're talking about, I think, was a, um, a, a, um, a, a, a technical correction in the accounts for depreciation on land, so that's not the I N E position. Um, and we have got the type of resources, the type of investment I was talking about earlier for, uh, technology to benefit patients, to benefit staff, um, is of the region of four hundred million pounds. That's the investment we're making in. And a significant amount of that is going into the Royal Brompton and Herefield on the sites that they are today for the future. So I just wanted to kind of correct, um, uh, some impressions that might unfortunately, uh, have been, um, uh, thought about in terms of, um, uh, the, uh, scale. Uh, the other point, I think, which is in the chatroom around Fulham, uh, taking over Chelsea, um, is a good analogy, actually, football. I mean, one of the things that we need to do is attract the very best people from across the world. Unfortunately, the best cardiac surgeons are not currently in this country. They come from many, many places. We have a multi, um, uh, national team giving the best care. Um, and, uh, together, we have, particularly with the research, um, uh, assets, um, uh, the ability and the, uh, uh, the revenue assets to attract the best. The paediatric services we're talking about, um, uh, subject to consultation, as I've said a number of times, uh, would move actually to the Everlyna Children's Hospital, uh, one of the comprehensive children's hospitals in London. Um, so, um, for which, um, children come from across the country and in fact, across the world for care. Um, so, uh, I think it's important that I do emphasise, um, uh, some of the points that I think unfortunately, perhaps haven't come over, I do apologise for that, uh, in terms of the why. But I would take you back, um, to the pre-two thousand seventeen position on what could have happened. Uh, and, and the reasons that we're doing this to stop that happening and give the security, in fact, to the staff and the patients of the Brompton that they deserve. Thank you councillor Elnargi.
Councillor Elnargi
Thank you very much for your, uh, comments, Robert, you want to follow on?
Thank, thank you councillor Elnargi. I'll, I'll come in on a, a couple of other points that have been made, if, if I may. Um, a number of councillors have asked the question about why, why now, why such a rush? And I think from our perspective, um, as we were saying in our comments at the beginning of the meeting, this is the culmination of, of over three years of collaboration. And indeed, I think councillor Spalding recalled that we came to, uh, the Oversight and Scrutiny Committee in September two thousand and eighteen to talk about the vision that we had, were developing two years ago. And it's the beginning of this year, January, that, uh, the Board of N H S England and N H S Improvement announced that they wanted us to pursue what they described as a merger. And as we've discussed this evening, that's, um, evolved this year to be a merger structured as an acquisition. Um, but it's been, it's, it's, uh, and at that time, at the end of January, we did in fact, um, uh, write out to, uh, councillors on, on the committee, both here and in Hammersmith and Fulham and, and others that we deal with. So I'm, I'm sorry if there was a disconnection at that time. But, but we have been, we have, we have, uh, endeavoured to be as open as we can about what, uh, what is proposed. And I think the, 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 I think the key thing about why we are continuing to pursue the transaction is in order to create some certainty about the future of the organisation. Remember, as we've said before, we are not currently planning to change services. And when those plans do, um, solidify, that's the point at which we'll come forward to ask for, uh, people's views and to consult, um, as broadly as we can. But at this stage, we're talking about changing the organisation and trying to create some certainty for the staff who work at Royal Brompton and Herefield. And indeed, for us to start planning with our neighbouring organisations about what the future might begin to look like.
Can I also, councillor Elnargi, just address
Yes, please.
Couple of the questions, firstly, it was, it was nice to get credit for something this evening. If it's uniting the, the council, we'll, we'll take that as a, uh, as a, as a, as a positive. Um, there were two points that I wanted to, I think, um, uh, councillor Beryl Cox made a point about, uh, staff leaving the organisation and that leading to the, um, damage to services. I, I think the opposite is what we have, um, uh, noticed and what we have experienced. We are not having any problems in recruiting, uh, staff to come and indeed And indeed, the certainty and the vision that we've been articulating and the certainty about the future has been one of the things that has attracted people to come to the Brompton over latter years. Councillors may not be aware, but three or so years ago, a large group of the intensive care team from the Brompton left to join Bart's Heart Centre, exactly because they thought that that was a centre that had a strategy and a future going forward. And the Brompton had no future because everybody appeared to be trying to close the Brompton down and to move services away. This proposal that we're talking about and this collaboration has changed the dynamic on that. And it's certainly one of the things that, as Ian said, you know, trying to get a attract, for example, congenital heart disease surgeons in a world market, the collaboration and the attraction of some certainty to that service, which has been blighted over the last 20 years by all of the things that have gone on. We're noticing that is something that is a real positive. The question about why the rush, there is no rush. We've been, I mean, in partnership with Guy's and St Thomas's for over three years in terms of working towards the partnership. What has changed is the fact that coming together and doing this by having a single board, looking at the overall organisation and services, I think is something that we feel is a benefit in terms of realising the vision that we've talked about. And then just one last correction in the chat, somebody has put that paediatric services are moving to Guy's. There is no plan to move any paediatric services to Guy's, as Professor Abs has said. The Everlina Children's Hospital is where the business case and the consultation will be for moving paediatric services, subject to all of those things. Thanks. You're muted. Councillor Chahon, you're muted.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr Grokup Mason. I'm temporarily taking over the chair, as councillor Alnargie had to leave for a short while. So I'm just going to ask, all those that have raised their hands that have asked a question, could you lower them, please? In other words, so that then I can see the questions that need to be asked.
Chair, I'm still waiting for an answer to my question, which wasn't given an opportunity to be answered.
Sorry councillor Laurie. I just want, if all those people have asked a question, to just lower their hand so I can see who's yet to ask a question, then I'll come back to you. Okay, councillor Laurie.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to keep my camera off because it affects my internet connection. My question is, if we know that the Chelsea farmers market and the former NHS Sub-accommodation on Pallas Terrace, which has been granted planning permission for redevelopment, constitutes unlocking the value of the site now for development of a new imaging centre, what does unlocking the value of the site mean in 10 years' time when all the services and the whole hospital site itself is no longer functional in Chelsea?
Who's going to take that?
Well, shall I have a go at taking that? I mean, one of the answers to that was given earlier by our colleagues from the Royal Marsden Hospital. One of the things I think that the Royal Marsden would wish to do would be potentially, again, subject to the changes and consultations we've talked about, be asking to acquire that building to expand the services importantly of the Royal Marsden. So that's an example of how to unlock that land value. The other one that I just wanted to take the opportunity to answer is within the chatroom, if I may, Guy's and St Thomas's, as a number of colleagues may know, Guy's and St Thomas's merged a number of years ago. And we've managed through the merger to become a stronger organisation. The Everlina Children's Hospital is part of Guy's and St Thomas's, but it is at the Westminster Bridge campus, on the south side of Westminster Bridge, on the St Thomas's campus. It's not, just check me, it's not at Guy's.
Thank you, Professor Abs. Can I just go to the next question from councillor Idris? Then I'll go to Robert Freeman, councillor Freeman, and then councillor Wade, and then councillor Henderson. Councillor Idris?
Yeah, thank you Chair. You keep talking about a consultation process, without which you're not going to move or go anywhere. What if, how much objection would stop you from moving? And why do the consultation, why go through all these motions right now when the whole thing seems to be pending on the consultation? Because if the consultation doesn't go your way, how are you going to move?
Shall I have a go at that? The consultation process is run by NHS England, and Hazel may want to say. NHS England have determined that, as we spoke earlier on, that the long term, they don't want to continue to commission paediatric cardiac surgery at the Brompton site. So the public consultation, when the scope of that is determined, the proposal will be that the paediatric inpatient services from the Brompton move to the Everlina when facilities can be built at the Everlina. If that's rejected in public consultation, that does not mean that they will remain at the Brompton. That will mean that NHS England will presumably find another answer to that. And in the original consultation, before we came together with a joint proposal with Guy's and St Thomas's, NHS England proposal was that the services would be split three ways between Great Ormond Street, Everlina and Southampton. So I would assume that something like that would be the outcome. So I think it would be wrong to say that if there is objection to moving paediatric inpatient services from the Brompton to Everlina, that they can therefore stay in perpetuity at the Brompton, I think that's false. And I think that if that were to be the case, the likelihood of keeping the teams together and the risk of staff moving away from the Brompton, particularly in paediatric area, because they don't see a credible future of keeping the multidisciplinary teams that have taken a long time to build up, they will see that that option is diminished and therefore they will move. And that will be a threat to the services.
Can I come in councillor? It's Hazel Fisher here from NHS England. And very much welcome councillor. Question about consultation. And clearly, any consultation, one goes into it with an open mind and in terms of the responses that are received, that's the purpose of consultation. Clearly, we want to, when we go through into the public consultation in the new year, want to put a very clear argument about why that option would be a good option. These are very specialist services. We've heard from Professor Ian Abs about the long nature of the journey around congenital heart disease back from the time of Bristol to get really excellent specialist services for congenital heart disease. And paediatric co-location is a key component of that. There are only 10 providers of congenital heart disease in the country, along with the co-location requirement. There's other requirements about critical mass. So the number of surgeons and interventionists that you have, the number of procedures that they undertake, why that adds to quality, all of that we will want to be putting into the public consultation document alongside the fact that part of the national structure for congenital heart disease requires that there are level-one units, hubs, that support district general hospitals. Some of the discussion that we've been having this evening about how does a specialist centre support across the wider geography, those networks of care are there. We will want to be putting all of that into the consultation document. And we wanted to make clear in this discussion that there would be consultation for movement of services and that that's done properly and fully, to reassure yourselves as councillors, that the coming together of an organisation managerially doesn't mean that that can sidestep the requirements for consultation, even if it is movement of a service from one, the site within one already within an organisation to another site managed, the services managed by that organisation. So that's what we wanted to do. I think during the consultation, and it will be, you know, very important for us to work with overview and scrutiny committee Kensington and Chelsea on the setting up of a JOSC. It is the case that London's specialised services providers do provide to a wider geography. So people come, over 60% of people come to the Royal Brompton service from outside of North West London. And actually, we've got a duty on us as the London region to ensure that we make good provision and for London residents, but also the much wider geography that we know that we're the custodians for in terms of those patients' access to specialised services. So we'd be wanting to put all of that into our consultation document. Thank you.
Thank you. But I'm okay. I might, I don't know, maybe I'm missing something here. But I just want to go to the earlier response. If, my understanding of a consultation is you're asking people what they think. They tell you what they think, you act on it. So I'm getting the impression that the consultation is just window dressing. Because if we don't think the way you think or you want us to think, then you're going to break it up anyways. That's the impression I got from the earlier response. Am I correct?
I'd just reiterate councillor, that we'd go into a consultation with an open mind. We'd seek to be evidence-based. And post a consultation, the responses to that consultation have to be properly considered.
So it's not predetermined. If the consultation doesn't work out a certain way, then things are going to happen a certain way anyways.
It's important in a consultation to go in open-minded. So you're quite correct councillor, it can't be predetermined.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Idris. I'm going to take three more questions. Then I'm going to go to the questions and comments received from members of the public, which are in written form. So I'm going to ask councillor Wade to ask her questions, and I'll come to Robert Freeman, councillor Freeman.
All right. I go back to the point that the one thing about the Brompton is the continuity of care. So you have a child and it might have an ongoing problem, and it's within the same environment. Therefore, you have continuity. So you're saying that you're going to break it up effectively by relocating to the Everlina, which means where will the adult services go? You've concentrated on the heart or the cardiac section, but I haven't heard very much expansion on what you're going to do with respiratory, which is clearly a very large area and an area of excellence. And when we examined the co-location with the Chelsea and Westminster Children's Hospital, this was considered too far apart. But if you're going to have your cardiac in one hospital, but you're going to have your adult services in another, this would indicate there's co-location implications.
So the question, in terms of continuity of care, first of all, in terms of adult and children, Guy's and St Thomas's on the St Thomas's site with Everlina and the adult services provides continuity of care for children with heart, lung and many other types of conditions. And I'm sure Ian would comment about that. If we have a position where the paediatric services in congenital heart disease have moved ahead of the adult services moving, there will be the service provided on two sites. But again, what I would reiterate is that the bulk of services for adult congenital heart disease are outpatient services. The number of operations that adults with congenital heart disease have are very small. The majority of their service is an outpatient service. So they're not at the hospital. And as we've indicated, they will.
The respiratory, you keep on.
I'll come to respiratory. The respiratory services are very complementary. The highly specialised Lane Fox unit and the satellite, which again, professor Abs will be able to speak about the detail of those things, and the specialist sleep ventilation respiratory failure service at the Brompton are very complementary. And again, in combination with the acute pathways, which have come into their own and been very important in the post-COVID era, a lot of their work is supporting patients at home with home ventilation and various different parts of kit. We've shifted, as I said right at the beginning, a lot of the patients who used to come to the Brompton for their therapies are now having those therapies at home. I don't think we will go back to bringing those patients into hospital to have their therapies. The move for increased diagnostics, the NHS England plan of moving some diagnostic imaging centres into the community and increasing capacity, will again make it that it's less important where the actual hub facility is for those services. The thing that's going to be really important is around the technology. And Ian's spoken about the electronic health record programme and the huge investment that will go into that, which will facilitate some of those services. So there is absolutely no, there will be no reduction in the offer for respiratory patients.
Let me, if I may councillor Chahon, just build on that. I mean, I think that point you raise around, councillor Wade, around continuity of care is incredibly important. And that point about children. One of the things that of course is in many ways incredible in the changes in medicine over the last 20 to 30 years has been that shift from, very sadly, some years ago, children with congenital heart disease with respiratory disease, either genetic or acquired, not surviving into adolescence. The revolutions in medicine are such now that those children are fantastically surviving into adulthood and importantly, becoming parents and giving birth and having the opportunity to have the types of drugs for respiratory disease that were mentioned earlier today. But also the long-term cardiac care. And importantly, as you all know, inherited cardiac conditions and a significant incidence of cardiac disease in children of parents with cardiac conditions, the ability to diagnose early, to intervene early and even do intervention within the womb. Those sorts of technologies, the brilliant care that allows those children to grow into adulthood and to live fulfilling, disease-free lives, really depends on bringing the power of modern medicine in all its shapes and forms together. And that's one of the opportunities we have now. And so I really just want to emphasise councillor Chahon, that and colleagues, just that amazing opportunity, which I'm afraid didn't exist to our predecessors, as little as 30 years ago. But that world, and that world will accelerate. The changes that are now possible in gene therapy, in regenerative medicine, will change the lives of the patients that we care for in ways that we can't even imagine at the moment. And that will happen in a few years. And that will happen in a few years, not a hundred years.
Thank you, Professor Abs, and thank you, Doctor, is it, I keep, I call you Doctor Grocock Mason, is it Mister or Doctor? Sorry.
No, Doctor Grocock Mason.
Doctor Grocock. Well, thank you both, um and hopefully councillor Wade, that answers your question. I, I'm gonna take the next two questions uh from Chris, um from councillor Robert Freeman and then Christine Biggers. Um, and then I'm gonna move on to the written questions because it's, it's getting rather late. Okay. Christine, over to you. I'm sorry, Robert Freeman, councillor Freeman, over to you.
Thank you, councillor John. I, I'd just like to make three points. One is, it's fine to say there's going to be a public consultation. And it's fine to say that everybody is going into it with an open mind. But once the Brompton has been taken over and is effectively a subsidiary of Geysers St Thomas's, it's very difficult to think that that consultation is going to be open-minded and open. Just a point I'd make. Uh, secondly, uh the question of research was brushed over, I think, really rather quickly um by NHS England. The contribution in respiratory medicine that the Brompton has made is absolutely enormous. And that is going to be lost once that close link with Hammersmith has gone. And it's, it's been probably the leading respiratory research in this country, and it's really sad to see that go. But if I can make one final point, and I'm absolutely sure Professor Abs didn't mean to give that impression, but I slightly got the impression that he was he was associating the uh takeover of congenital heart disease at the Brompton with the problems of the Bristol Royal Infirmary in the mid-nineties. Now, I'm absolutely sure he didn't mean to give that impression, but that he certainly gave me that impression. The Bristol Royal Infirmary was one of the most disgraceful pieces of paediatric medicine that this country has seen. It was arrogant, it was careless. People suffered, they lost their children, lives were terminated early. If you contrast that with the Brompton, the Brompton with its paediatric CHD had some of the best outcomes in the country and continues to have some of the best outcomes in the country. I believe the outcomes at the Brompton are at least as good, if not better, and I believe they're better than the Evelina. So I think, can we please make absolutely sure that uh that misunderstanding is put to rest? Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much, councillor. Let me come back on, on that point, absolutely. The outcomes in congenital heart disease at the Rob, Robson and Herefield are excellent. However, you will know that the outcome uh of the um Safe and Sustainable Review was in twenty seventeen um to uh recommend the distribution, as, as Doctor Grocock Mason has said, of the paediatric cardiac services to three other organisations and the inevitable impact that would have had. That is a matter of record. Um, and the work that we've done together is actually to convince NHS England that keeping the services intact and with um uh the support uh of Geysers St Thomas's um uh is, in fact, a better option. Um, so uh that uh those services do know, um, uh do not um uh have currently um a, a guaranteed future um at the Royal Brompton and Herefield, as, as we've talked later about on this call, and that is one of the reasons uh brilliantly to get together. Um, I think the second thing, if I may, just on research.
Sorry, could I, could I just stop you there? And I'm really sorry, but I, I'm very concerned that there was, I think, a slight innuendo that associated outcomes at the Brompton with the Bristol Royal Infirmary. And I would be grateful if you would disassociate yourself from that.
Uh, as I said, that, that is not the case, but you will remember the outcome of the process. Um, but I reiterate the point that the outcomes at the Royal Brompton are excellent, but that was the outcome. The, um, on research, um, uh as Professor Weaver has said, and, and the conversations that I've had with Professor Weaver are exactly to address some of the points that you raised about the continuity of research and the fact that we wish to continue it. The, there are a number of collaborations across London, the CRIC is a good example, uh which are um uh collaborations between uh three great universities working in one place um uh in the centre of London, but distributing the research from them uh into their host organisations and the healthcare systems associated with them. Um, one uh question, I suspect, um again on um aspects of respiratory care is actually how we do this better together. Um, uh, and uh there are brilliant uh research uh platforms and researchers at Imperial College, uh some of whom work at the Royal Brompton and Herefield. There are a number of other uh brilliant uh researchers at King's College London uh who I'm sure will collaborate with colleagues at the Royal Brompton and Herefield. I'll give you a very direct example, there's some very exciting research now um in MRA, uh mRNA turn-on of stem cells in cardiac myocytes, uh which may well actually uh be able to uh transform the lives of patients with heart failure. Um, and that research based at King's is something that we see being applied at Herefield. So that geographic distribution, um I wouldn't um accept, I'm afraid, uh is a barrier. What we need to do is to have the type of behaviours that allow collaboration to flourish, uh and I'm certainly committed to that.
Thank you, Professor Abs, thank you. Um, can, can I take the question from Christine Biggers before I go to members of the public?
Hi there, thank you, Chair. It, there's been a, a lot of concentration on high-level research and high-level clinical medicine. But most of the people who, uh as you've said, who have contact with the Brompton and with other, and with Imperial are actually outpatients or people living at home, being supported in the community. And you say that there's not going to be any change to those services at present, but I take it that over the next ten years there will be, and in fact, a change is happening at the moment because of COVID. So my question is, what are your plans for engaging more widely with people in the community on those pathways and, um, you know, what are you going to do about that engagement rather than the bigger consultation?
Yeah, I, I would, I would answer that, and that the, the biggest provider of, of community services and um uh primary and secondary care in the local area in North West London i- is not the Brompton. It is the other, some of the other organisations on the um group and Bob, uh Claver and the um the ICS are exactly addressing some of those questions about how we can improve population health and provision in the, in the community. And we will do absolutely everything that we can do and that we are asked to do to support that process, wherever we're asked to uh to do that, we will work with the local. But as a, as a hospital, the Brompton does not provide community services and does not provide secondary care for most um patients. The um patients are not brought in as an emergency to the Brompton through an A and E department. They tend to come from other hospitals or it's, it's more planned type of uh of care.
Thank you. Um, Christine, and what was your, um, just to introduce yourself, sorry, I should have asked this earlier on.
I, I'm from Healthwatch Central West London. I mean, I, I totally accept that, but it is, as the patient said earlier on, a question of the coordination and the collaboration. And I don't think, you know, it's not just the Brompton, but it is also how you collaborate with other organisations.
Yes, no, I, I, I accept that, and, and I, you know, I think, you know, what we've tried to say is we, we will collaborate and are trying to collaborate, and I think the, the, the point I highlighted, highlighted about healthcare changing. You know, over the next ten years, the Brompton, as we've said, will still be in the place where the Brompton is. But I would, I would uh guarantee that the way that healthcare is delivered across North West London will change dramatically, not because of anything the Brompton does, but because of the way health services are organising themselves. And there are other people on the call who are um uh much more um uh in tune with community um services and, and A and E and emergency care and the changes that are going on in those uh services. So it's the transformation in healthcare which is going to be the biggest driver generally in the way that patients interact with clinicians.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, so I'm, I'm now going to move on to, I think, um, questions from outside of the organisation before I, I return to the written questions. I have Jonathan Webber, if you could just introduce yourself, please.
Hello, thank you. Um, so Jonathan Webber, Dean, Factory Medicine.
Of course.
Thank you, councillor. Um, I just want to respond to Ian Abs' comment. We already have the country's best centre for cardiovascular and respiratory research between Imperial College and the Brompton. This move is not going to make it better. It's going to stretch and, I suspect, demoralise the researchers, particularly in respiratory medicine because of the uncertainty over the future location or co-location and the removal over time of them physically from the Imperial College environment. And this is the risk, this is the risk to respiratory research. So um you've got something that's excellent. And that's what's going to be disrupted.
And, and as you remember, if I may come back on that, councillor Jahan, as you remember, Jonathan, the conversations we've had uh about the importance of supporting Imperial College researchers and the commitments that um I've given you personally um on that. So I do hope that that um is reassurance um about that future. Because with that, as I, as we've already said, uh without large collaborations, um uh the types of research that we need to do in this country to keep UK PLC uh at the front of the life sciences' agenda require us to collaborate as much as possible.
If I could just reply briefly, um your reassurances, Ian, which have been greatly received, are short-term. And I'm concerned over the medium and long term, where I, I do not see how this is going to improve the situation for research for the UK. Thank you.
Thank you both. Um, so can I um ask members of the public if, if they um could either raise their hands so I, so I, so you can um bring yourself to my attention and I can return to ask uh ask you to ask your question. Uh, in the meantime, I've got three questions um and comments received from members of the public. Um, one from Mr Schumi, who's not attending, and I'll read out his question. Um, as it, as it is constructing a forty million pound imaging centre and claiming it is neither closing nor moving, can RBHFT commit themselves here and today that they are remaining in Chelsea along with services, staff and assets permanently and in its totality? That's the first question.
If I could go at answering, answering that one, of course, I think, you, you know, committing permanently is, is not something that anyone can do and and as we've said, ten years is an awfully long time in, in healthcare. The, the commitment to the fact that we are in um Chelsea for a long time and we are determined to do everything that we can to improve the service that we can offer to our patients is evidenced by the fact we're investing in the imaging centre. And the imaging centre is needed for a whole variety of different reasons, but the, the facilities before were in very, very old buildings. The high-end clinical service that are provided in Sydney Street at the moment, the patients have access to one CT scanner, um which, if that breaks down, is, is, um, means there's no access to the CT scanner. This will rectify that. It will provide a interventional bronchoscopy suite connected to the intensive care unit, which enables many of the innovative therapies that are being developed to be expanded and to treat a wider population. And we would foresee that being an asset that is, remains in the NHS family long term. You're muted again, councillor Chair.
Thank you very much. Yes, that's very kind. Um, I, I think Mr Schumi will, no doubt, um see that um at some point, or hear your answer at some point. Um, now going on to um a question from Miss Christensen. Boris promised to build forty hospitals, which has not happened. Why on earth pull one down when our needs are so great? Invest in cutting-edge teaching hospital, so Brompton could, would be a good candidate for that.
And maybe that should be addressed to Boris, not to, not to me, but we, as we've said, we're not planning and not discussing at the moment plans to, to pull down a hospital.
So, and, and finally, um, a question from Miss McDonald, which is an extract, an extract from a longer comment. Um, how does this proposed merger propose to deal with the backlog of the specialist care services? Plus the need for new cases provided by the Brompton if the, if this merger takes place?
Not quite sure that I understand really the, what's being asked um of that. We, we are uh not reducing the number of services that we are delivering. And indeed, during the COVID uh period, Herefield Hospital, which I know we focused on the Brompton, but Herefield Hospital was one of two hospitals that continued to uh operate on cardiac surgical patients who required urgent treatment throughout the pandemic period. And patients from South London were uh being operated on by surgeons from uh St Thomas's and King's up at Herefield. So the collaboration between the um, the, the units and movement of staff adds to resilience of the services, so it makes us much more able to utilise our services collectively.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, this is, I think, recorded, so hopefully um um Miss McDonald will get to hear that response. I have one other question um that has come in, um and it's about um our council's draft Brompton SPD on which the consultation began yesterday. It sets out the development um principles that show how medical uses can be retained and enhanced on the Royal Brompton sites. We think it provides a framework for world-class care to continue in Chelsea for many decades to come. Whilst the document recognises the potential for some enabling development, it also makes clear that we do not regard any primary changes of use as necessary. That will guide against your unlocking the financial value of this land. Our borough wants you to stay and will facilitate upgrades to your own site facilities. How will you respond to our SPD? Will you commit to retaining facilities in the Royal Borough?
I don't know whether Robert will want.
Perhaps, perhaps I, I can, um, I can uh comment on that initially.
Robert Craig.
Yeah, it's Robert Craig here again, thanks councillor. Um, I mean, we, we uh, we understood, we heard that there was going to be an SPD produced and we uh saw it yesterday as, as others had, so, so we haven't, um there weren't discussions with us about what it might say, and we haven't yet had a chance to consider it. So we understand that comments are uh requested by the thirtieth of December and will make sure that, that we respond in, in that time. Um, but, you know, we, we, it has always been our intention that the future of services and therefore what might happen to the estate if services are proposed to move will obviously need to be a, a matter of, of, of ongoing discussion with the council. Um, and, and that, that's not, that's nothing new, and of course, we would, we would expect to continue to, to to, to do that as we did with the, the consent that was, that was agreed over the, the farmer's market.
Uh, Chairman, Castle Williams here, could we have a response to that question from NHS England?
Is Helen, sorry, um councillor Williams.
Yes, I just said, could we have a response?
Do we have NHS England still here?
Yes, yes, Fisher here still. Yes, well, in, similarly to Robert, we would want to um consider the planning document and respond accordingly.
Thank you. Um, does that answer your question, councillor Williams?
Thank you, yes.
Great. Um, so I'm going to, I'm going to hand over back to the chair, um councillor Marwan El Naghi, um if he's here, um and then he will close proceedings. if he's here, and then he will close proceedings.
Yes, I am here. Thank you so much for relieving me. I do apologise and thanks, White Chair, thanks councillor Shohan. I have diabetes and I did not have a little break, so I felt a little bit dizzy. So my apology. But I really thank you all for coming tonight to this meeting. It is vital for all of us to have this frank discussion with, as I said, everyone contributed nicely in a very constructive way. We have one common thing in our mind, the best for our patients and the best for our residents. Whatever angle we come, we come together. So hopefully, I'm really grateful to everyone contributed to this frank discussion. It was really appreciated. And looking back at history, Royal Brompton is an icon in the borough. The same as when you are looking at well-established organisations and is part of our community. So you've seen the feeling around and we really appreciate what you are trying to do, the best way for our patient. And you've listened and we all listened. And now I would like to invite my committee members to reflect on what they heard today in a constructive way, where we are going to, I propose, to discuss and make recommendations to our Royal Brompton and the Herefield Foundation Trust and to the council leadership, how we've seen this debate is going. We put our points together and we'll make that recommendation. I can see the time has gone over one hour, over the stated time, which I normally like to conclude my meeting. As we've been sitting here for a long time. So what I would like to propose to my committee members, if we reflect on what's been discussed today and we collate all the points from what we heard today and we listen to it again as it's recorded or looking back at your notes. And then we'll have it like one simple agenda item, because I would like this recommendation to be discussed in public. And so we can put it now, if you like to discuss it, but I think it's too late. So I would recommend to have it like a small agenda item at our next meeting. So what do you think, committee members?
Agreed, chairman. I think that's a good way forward.
Thank you, councillor Williams.
Agreed.
Yes, I'm very happy with that. Okay, thank you so much for your agreement. So I would like to, I see my hands up, councillor Atkinson, to come in to comment.
Chair, I would very much like this council to make it clear that we totally oppose the idea that's been put forward. And I would point out that the vote by the Brompton is to take place on the 15th of December. So I don't think you can wait to put together the council's view until your next meeting.
Chair, question.
Yes, councillor.
I thought we as a council have already passed the motion actually rejecting this whole idea of Brompton moving. So I don't know, are we going back on ourselves? Or I thought this has been settled in a sense.
I think what we've heard today, I'm not going to go back to the debate and the motion and what's restarting this meeting again. I think it's unfair for everybody. As I said now, we reflect on what's been discussed today in full and then we can communicate it between us. And then we'll have it as another point, item, agenda for our next meeting.
But chair, it has to be done before the 15th of December. Our response has to be in, if it's not affected influence, before the vote.
So we'll.
Councillor El Naji, sorry, it's Jackie Heard.
Jackie, yes, please help us.
Your next meeting is actually after the 15th. And I think that the committee might want to consider putting something together in time for the 15th, if that is the deadline.
So we'll.
Jackie, would it be possible for them to have a, like a small little meeting, not a public meeting? For the committee members to get together to do it or to do it by email?
If at any point they could move the meeting from the 15th of December to after Christmas to allow the council and the residents to give a proper response, because it's quite a lot of information.
Yes, a lot. It's a considerable, a very heavy weight.
Could we ask the Bromptons, as they are here, if they would consider moving that to perhaps February the 15th, which would give us all a lot of time to get our answers in. And in the interest of openness and transparency, which they've reassured us that that is on the table, is that something that they would agree to?
And since it's a merger, not an acquisition, we need to be consulted anyways.
I think transparency is so important, especially if you're trying to consult with residents at this time. The whole process of pushing out a consultation during a partial lockdown, it's absolutely essential that the Brompton act in good faith and defer their decision until after the New Year.
Are they still in the room?
Thank you, councillor Wade.
Yes, they are.
Well, can I ask Craig or Dr Ayson? Would that be, as you can see, is it possible for consideration?
What's certainly possible, it's not in my gift to make that decision. I would suggest councillor El Naji that perhaps you write formally if that is, you want a response from the board of the organisation. I think that, as I say, the point that councillor Idris made, I think the council have made their representation in the meeting in September of made their views pretty clear that they were opposed to the merger. I think the, you know, again, going back to the point about whether consultation is done in open mind and an open heart, if you like. I think it's clearly clear that the minds of many of the councillors haven't changed from September. And the several hours that we've spent talking through things have not taken. I would suggest you address any request of that nature to the chair of the organisation.
In which case, I would have said that it's even more essential, if you want transparency of consultation, that residents should be able to express their views. If you feel that the council has already made its decision, that therefore this should be, the borough residents should be able to voice their opinion. And therefore, I would ask that the chair of the committee write to the board of the Royal Brompton and ask for their decision to be deferred until after the New Year.
Yep, I will do that. Yeah, okay. I think it's a fair request and we will do that. Yes, Jackie?
Sorry, councillor El Naji. Obviously, you're asking if the Brompton will move their meeting and they may or may not do that.
Yeah, but in the meantime, we can have.
What I was going to say is obviously a lot of people, the committee have come tonight and put their findings heard from residents. So there'll be a note after this meeting and as a committee, you might want to look at that and pull together your recommendations and give them to the Brompton. So although the council's made the motion and put forward views, you can also do it as a scrutiny committee based on what you've heard tonight. So you might want to have that as a contingency plan, because the Brompton might not want to change their meeting.
That's correct, yeah.
Into this meeting, you might want to write, make your recommendations. I've just spoken to one of my colleagues in governance who's confirmed that if we get the notes from the meeting, the committee can look at that and draw their recommendations and still put them into the Brompton, if that's what you want to do as councillors.
Yeah, we will, because I think that's what, instead of having it like a small item, we can do it by email. So we can take these notes, reflect on them as a committee and then we'll make a recommendation as a committee. Yeah, we'll do it that way.
Jackie, it might be possible if they won't move the meeting to have a small meeting, just the committee members?
If the Brompton won't move the meeting, either this committee can have a meeting just to pull together their recommendations.
Yes.
You can always have another meeting if you want another meeting. So you can either do that or.
We can do it by email. We'll look at the notes as a committee and then we'll take it from there.
Okay.
I'm not, yeah, let's do it this way. So at this note, I would like to conclude this meeting. And I really thank everybody who committed to this lengthy and vivid discussion. And with apology to if we upset anybody. But the intention is to have a frank discussion, as I stated at the outset, with an open mind. And let's hope for the best outcome for our residents. And I really am grateful and a very good evening to you all. And stay safe and keep well. And thank you so much. So I conclude this meeting tonight.